This time, we'll start off with public comment. Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have six. Our first two speakers are Sandra Gray and Musi Olo.
Great. So while you're coming up to testify, I'll go ahead and let you know about our instructions for public comment. Yeah, okay. Go ahead and have a seat right there. There you go. Thank you for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen and reflect on your comments. The board will not respond to any comments or questions during public comment, but we have asked our board manager, Roseanne Powell, to follow up on issues raised during public testimony, and Roseanne is sitting right over here at the end. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. For the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will come on right there in front of you. When you have one minute remaining, the yellow light will come on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound, and we respectfully ask that you wrap up your comments at that time. Again, we sincerely appreciate your input and we're happy to have you here this evening. Thank you. You may go ahead.
Hello, thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Sandra Gray, G-R-A-Y. I am a parent at Beverly Cleary School. I've been a parent at Beverly Cleary School for seven years. And I'm here representing many families that live east of Forty-seventh that will be impacted by some options that I think you may be hearing tonight, given for Beverly Cleary School for the 2015-2016 year. And I would like, actually, the people that I'm representing to stand up. And you can stay throughout the two minutes, or you can sit back down, but I want to see who's who I'm representing. We are all in agreement that option two, which you will see later, I'm guessing, I feel weird that this is beforehand.
It's okay.
Reopening Rose City Park as a starter boundary is not the option that takes every child at BCS into consideration and should not be considered for 2015-2016. While the three-campus solution that we are currently in is an inconvenience for some parents, the educational and social needs of every child are currently being met to the fullest. The three-campus situation is working temporarily, and all kids are enjoying smaller class sizes. Option two is another short-term fix. It creates new problems with trying to start a mini-school with few families, little funding, and no PPS experience opening a new school. Reopening a school requires extensive deliberation, planning, and funding to ensure a lapse in quality education does not occur for any child. All children in BCS and PPS should have their educational needs met, and reopening a starter school with eighty to ninety children to alleviate overcrowding and inconveniences should not be taken lightly, and I'm personally surprised it's even being considered. The current three-campus solution continues to give every BCS child the robust program they deserve. Several PPS schools should be so lucky to have what we have and are more deserving of the designation hotspot. You found a solution for us and we thank you. And we may need to continue this solution for one more year to give PPS a chance to reopen a neighborhood school the correct way with a district-wide boundary review. We are a very reasonable group of people. We are aware that there's overcrowding at Beverly Cleary School, and a permanent solution needs to be found. We fully support Rose City Park School reopening, but we believe if we're truly taking the children into account, this decision needs to be part of the district-wide boundary view and include the neighboring schools. Please, open a school with a robust program with all of the options available at all the other schools that includes our whole neighborhood and takes into consideration the diverse voices of the community and not just the loudest. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My name is Musi Olo. I'm the chairman of Somali-American Council of Oregon. Most of them, as you know, you don't know Somali community. As of study done by 2008, when Portland State University was about eight thousand, today the estimate is about twelve to fifteen thousand in our state of Oregon. Most of the site in Monomac County, studied done by Coalition of Color, and also Portland State done. I was looking at the numbers for the Somali community. It's very miserable, and that thing was submitted in the last meeting event that the committee had. It shows achieving math gap of thirteen point five percent. It's well below to anybody else that you can look in the list. And also, achieving gap for reading also is about twenty point four percent. When I came to advocate for Somali community, it was about three and a half years ago, when we had an incident that brought our community together. And at that time, we're dealing in the sight of law enforcement. But after three and a half years of dealing with that, we realized the problem is coming from the education system, and the Portland School District system is coming up. And I've seen today kids that are in the system that are prone to fail, prone to become, especially our male youth, are going to the justice system directly. In Seattle, we have about three hundred youngsters are in jail system over there, and Portland is going that direction if you don't reverse. The Somali population in 2010, this according to the Oregonian, it was the third population in the Portland School District. That means, as of 2010-11, Somali community should have a chance and given opportunity for dual-language immersion program. As we speak in today, this summer is when I brought this subject up, it's been proposed last time, and there are people that still believe that this issue doesn't exist, or even even the community doesn't, it's not our town. Just because we don't see in our quarters and we're learning the American justice, American system of democracy, doesn't mean we should have, our rights should not be, should be ignored. If we don't do that, if we don't help the kids already in the system, we're going to have kids like Batula. Batula, she's, she came here, ninth, came here and she was placed in ninth grade when she couldn't even write her name. And three years later, she was given a degree to nowhere. Basically, she went to PCC and they told her to go. She spent three more years learning the English language, and six years later, now she's learning how to, how to do the numbers and basic academics. We know that dual-language immersion has a ninety percent success rate compared to the current rate of fifty percent, which in Somali community, the numbers speak clearly. I urge you to do the right thing. I urge you to do what you have done for other communities and help our Somali-American kids for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers, Meg Hagan and Dave Porter.
Chair and hold, Superintendent Smith, members of the board and members of the public. My name is Dave Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R. With both the second and the district-wide boundary review process coming before you soon, there will be a lot of rhetoric about neighborhood schools. Tonight, I wish to offer a few comments about expanding dual-language immersion programs in the context of a system of neighborhood schools. In a district with growing enrollment, I do not think closing schools should be a major worry, but how to increase racial equity and how to expand immersion programs should both attract your attention. First, recall that immersion programs now enroll about eighteen percent of kindergarteners. That eighteen percent could and should rise to thirty-three percent over the next five years, given the plan suggested to you. Second, think ahead to a system of elementary schools in which one-third of the students are in dual-language immersion programs. Do we have students transferring all over the district, or do we design and develop those additional immersion programs in a geographic system of neighborhood schools? There is a wide range of options, from having one dual-language immersion strand out of the usual three at each and every neighborhood school, to having every third neighborhood school as a neighborhood dual-language immersion school with no English-only component, with lots of combination and mixtures in between. We need to rethink enrollment and transfer rules to make immersion programs less disruptive to existing-only neighborhood schools, to make them more supportive of racial equity, to make them more accessible to neighborhood students, and to make them more integral to a system of neighborhood schools. Third, some current PPS immersion programs are now hostile to neighborhood students in limiting neighborhood admissions and thus turning away neighborhood applicants. Here's the data from the 2013-14 lottery, which turned away one hundred and three neighborhood immersion applicants from their neighborhood immersion school. Fourth, a neighborhood school does not need to be an all, an all-English-only school. PPS now has one form of neighborhood dual-language immersion schools, schools that enroll primarily neighborhood students, that have one or more strands of Spanish immersion, that have one or more English-only strands, and that do not permit out-of-neighborhood transfers into the immersion program. James John, Riggler, Scott, and Sitner are examples of such neighborhood Spanish dual-language immersion schools. Fifth, a neighborhood school could also be an all-immersion school. A neighborhood school does not need to have an English-only component. Hillsborough, for example, has three neighborhood all-Spanish immersion schools with no English-only components. All neighborhood students can attend the neighborhood immersion program. Parents who do not want their children to attend the neighborhood Spanish immersion school can opt out and transportation will be provided to an alternative school. And there's, there's from their webpage. PPS currently has no such neighborhood all-immersion school. Richmond is an all-Japanese immersion school, but gives no priority to proximity or neighborhood in admissions. It could.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Meg Hagan, H-A-G-A-N. On behalf of the approximately eight thousand five hundred PPS students who have dyslexia, I'd like to tell you that October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. Because of this, I challenge you to take action this month towards helping our student population with this most common learning disability. The decisions you are tasked with making can improve children reading at grade level, which can reduce behavior problems and also increase graduation rates at PPS. If a student does not read at grade level by grade three, they have a four times higher chance of dropping out of school. I am here because my son is in that risk pool and has a one-in-seven chance of ever becoming a grade-level reader. Our son is in the fifth grade and is bright, inquisitive, kind, handsome, and dyslexic. On every report card, he has received the highest marks for characteristics of a successful learner, and yet, last year, our intelligent son did not meet in reading or math on the Oaks exams. He struggles with writing as well. Our dyslexia journey began in first grade. Wonderful professionals with master's degrees in education, psychology, and counseling were convinced that his reading would just take off, even after I outlined how he clearly exhibited signs of dyslexia. His reading never took off. In third grade, we paid for an outside evaluation, which confirmed that our son has dyslexia and dysgraphia. He is severe enough to warrant an IEP. His IEP at times has not addressed his deficits in decoding, and it has always lacked the needed intensity. He currently receives two hours of small-group reading instruction per week with a special education teacher that we absolutely adore. Research shows that he needs two hours of intervention per day to, to become a grade-level reader, which is also the RTI Tier Three recommendation. To quote Louisa Moats, "Reading is rocket science." Waiting until a child fails in third grade makes interventions much more costly and less effective. Prevention is a less costly option. The K-two years are when the brain has the plasticity to enable the dyslexic child on reading tasks to shift from using the inefficient left side of the brain to the more efficient right side of the brain as a non-dyslexic child does. Numerous functional MRI studies will confirm this. How do we help the kids who are most at risk for reading failure? Start with universal screenings, and K-one, begin powerful, daily, fifty-minute interventions that, and have classroom teachers providing systemic and explicit instruction in the five pillars of reading. While I admire the storytime rollout, Superintendent Smith, a program like that will not address a learning disability like dyslexia that is neurological in origin. Please fund dyslexia training for every student, every teacher in every school. Follow the Oregon Literacy Framework, use RTI in every school. Use explicit systematic direct instruction in the K-three classroom. To capture our older dyslexic students, use RTI and provide a summer program modeled after the Heinemann Settlement School in Kentucky, which for thirty-three years has been closing reading gaps and math gaps over a five-week period in the summer. And I provided information with you, for you.
Thank you very much.
Our last two speakers are Shannon Foxley and Bob Butler.
Good evening, board. My name is Shannon Foxley, F as in Frank, O-X-L-E-Y. In my everyday life, I wear a number of different but equally important hats: school counselor, Portland parent, and member of the PAT Executive Board. Today, I come to you wearing a hat of professional school counselor. I've worked for PPS since February 2011, and in that time have worked in four schools for seven different principals. I've had a caseload as small as three hundred and sixty and as high as almost eight hundred. I've worked half-time in two schools, and since the 2013-14 school year, I've had the blessing of working full-time in one school, a regular elementary school. I'm here today to talk about the four million dollars that Superintendent Smith has earmarked for her three initiatives for the school year, more specifically about the plan to increase the ressort of justice programs within our schools. As a professional school counselor, when I went through the four-day RJ training last August, it wasn't a new concept, but when they grounded my work with a different clarity in practice. When I do research on a truly sustainable RJ program like Arjo in Oakland, it gives me great hope in creating a system that meets students where they are, where they are coming from, and supports them in creating a school practice that helps them learn to read for comprehension by the end of third grade and graduate from high school, as well as lower our issues with students of color and suspensions. But to truly create an RJ program that's alive and sustainable, we need a long-term vision and adequate staffing to sustain it. The most recent issue of Rethinking Schools magazine editorial spoke directly to the concept of what is and what, what isn't resort of justice. The overwhelming message for this editorial is we need a system that is thought-out, planful, and future-thinking. Instead of sending an RJ coach into a building for one to four years and then pulling them out at the end of a grant, we need to create a social-emotional support system that is sustainable and vibrant. I want to give you guys some numbers. Four hundred and eighty, six hundred and fifty-four, four hundred and seventy, four hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty. These are the caseloads of five counselors in this school district. All five work in focused priority schools, all are the only counselor in their building, and all are funded by PPS at half-time FTE, but work full-time because their principal feels that having a full-time counselor is a priority for their building and the principal's backfill with the general funds. These counselors work with students and families and do their best to meet their needs. I'm sure each of these amazing people would love to implement the tenets of RJ in their buildings, but how? Which is where I have my ask, is we are looking at the four million dollar surplus. Instead of putting money into get another initiative that will shift with every staff member who leaves or principal who has moved, use that money to increase the number of professional school counselors in your elementary, middle, and K-eight schools. Train us, the people who work with these students every day, to create a system of resort of justice. Use the amazing people from Resolutions Northwest, who I adore, to help us create and design programs to support all students in their path to learning, but provide more professional school, school counselors to do it. Increase the school counseling matrix so every school K-eight has full-time counselors, or two, and allows principals to use the precious FTE they're backfilling counselors with to provide additional teaching support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for your comments. Please feel free to connect with our board manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have any questions or if there's additional information that any of you'd like to leave with, with the board. So let's move on to our first agenda item, which is an update. We're pleased to once again receive an update on our boundary review process. As a reminder, PPS partnered with PSU Center for Public Service in this process. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, and while I'm introducing, I'll ask John Isaacs, who is our Chief of Communications and Public Affairs, Judy Brennan, who directs our enrollment and transfer office, Phil Keisling, Keisling with the Center for Public Service, and Wendy Willis, who's with the National Policy Consensus Center. And just as a reminder, back in February of 2013, the board approved Resolution 4718, which asked the district staff to develop and recommend a process for comprehensive review of school boundaries district-wide and policies related to student assignment and transfer to better align with the racial educational equity policy and promote strong capture rates and academic programs at every grade level. And part of what we then did was commissioned SACD or the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer to take a look at the enrollment and transfer policies, and we engaged in an intergovernmental agreement with Portland State to look at the boundary review process. We heard in May, the first report on Phase One came before the board. At that point, rather than moving right into what was the recommended Phase Two, we, we accepted the recommendation to do a bridge report, which is what is being presented to myself and the board this evening, and we look forward to hearing your report. So, and I'll ask John Isaacs to go ahead and start it off.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, and thank you, members of the board. We're excited to be back here with you to talk, give an update on district-wide boundary review. And we're gonna, our presentation tonight's gonna have three sections to it. The first is Judy Brennan will be presenting updated enrollment growth forecasts for you. Then we're gonna hear from Wendy Willis and Phil Keisling from the PSU Center for Public Service, their recommendations for initiating district-wide boundary review in coordination with other important PPS initiatives. And then we'll be going back to Judy for steps to diagnose and address urgent enrollment issues, and these will all flow right into each other, and you'll understand the order in which we're doing them. Just to provide the context for the presentations tonight, Resolution 4718, adopted by the board last year, called for district-wide boundary enrollment and transfer review. And PPS Policy 4.10.045 calls for an annual assessment of enrollment issue, issues, and the PSU Population Research Center provides biannual updates of district-wide enrollment forecasts. All of this is obviously intertwined, which is why we're doing this all in one report to you tonight. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Judy, who will do the first part.
Good evening, and I'm very excited because I get to start with the big-picture great news. I don't always get to be in that role, so this is, this is fun for me. I hope it's of interest to you. So I'm just gonna start by setting the context of where we are as a district in terms of our enrollment. As you likely know, we are still compiling the actual enrollment counts for the 14-15 school year. There's still quite a bit of data cleanup to do and make sure that all the schools have reported everything in, but I can report that it looks like we're going to have about five hundred more students across the system this year than we did last year, which makes it the sixth straight year of overall enrollment increase. And I'm also gonna share a little bit of information with you tonight about our most recent report from the Population Research Center that shows that that enrollment growth is forecast to continue for the foreseeable future. In fact, to the tune of six thousand two hundred seventy-six more students across the next fifteen years than what we had last year.
That's a lot.
No, I told you, this is the fun part. A little bit about those forecasts, the Population Research Center, we've had a partnership with them for many years. Every other year, we get a full set, so on the even years, we get a full report. This one's about eighty pages long. On the odd years, we get an update of just the one-year forecast and then support for our annual staffing process. Since 2009, those district-wide forecasts have been accurate within point one percent of actual enrollment. So another way to say that is, for what the demographers forecast for one or two or three or four years out, they have been right compared to the real numbers of kids, within one kid for every thousand that we have in our system. So that's pretty sharp-shooting. The new report we have is based on our 2013 enrollment. It takes into account our known population, housing, and enrollment changes. There's information that comes in from all sorts of metro sources on what's happening in the larger environment. And just as a reminder, the forecasts assume that the same school boundaries and enrollment patterns occur into the future. Of course, we can change those, which is why we get the new forecasts every couple of years, but what you'll see in this report is what our system could look like if all of our enrollment patterns were the same, but we just had sixty-two hundred more students. If you're interested in seeing the report, you can find it on our PPS website by going to PPS Departments, Data Policy Analysis, and looking under Enrollment Projections. So when you get there, some of the things that you'll find include this, I think this is the pointer that I'm going to try and use. Is this my pointer? Yes, okay. So all of them start from this point of 2013-2014. And this chart illustrates that we really get three different scenarios in the biggest picture, the high, medium, and low. Over the last several years, Portland Public Schools has consistently come in between the medium and high-growth forecast. I've included on this chart, the, I've included on this chart where the last set of forecasts were, that's this purple line with the red numbers. It started at a lower point because the demographers in 2012 thought we'd have fewer kids in 2013 than we really did, and it doesn't go up as high. The difference going out about ten years, sorry, I'm pointer-challenged, is between the new medium-growth forecast and the old medium-growth forecast is about eight hundred students over a ten-year period of time. The medium-growth forecast, which is this red line in the center, is the one that's used to create school-specific, grade-specific forecasts, but I think it's important to point out that there is a broad range of change that could happen in the system, and that over the last several years, Portland PPS enrollment has tended to track a little bit higher than medium. So when you think about long-term planning, advisable to be ready for this, but don't be surprised if you could even be in this range. A little bit more about those forecasts by grade grouping. So this chart illustrates four different kinds of grade groupings. K-two on the bottom, the three-through-five grades, six-through-eight for middle grades, and then our high school grades. In our current configuration, we see that it's the lower grades that have been growing most rapidly over the last few years. That just stands to reason, more kids starting at kindergarten are where we've seen the most kids over time, or recently. However, as that larger group of students moves forward, you can eventually see that it will impact all of our grade levels, and actually, over the fifteen years, it's our high schools that will experience about thirty-six percent of the projected growth over the fifteen-year period. So that tracks really closely with your decisions around long-range facility planning and making sure that we have flexible high school facilities to absorb more students. And then finally, I wanted to point out, now, this is kind of just colorful spaghetti up here, so I'm not gonna go into a lot of details, but I just wanted to give you that sense that each of these lines represents a different K-12 cluster of students by where they live in Portland. This is how many attended, lived in Port, in our district by cluster last year. This is how many are expected to be in the district by cluster in fifteen years. The point I want to make is that they're all growing. They're all moving in the growth direction, but the rate of growths are different, and they're all starting from somewhat different places. So it's important that we understand where our schools are starting from, how many of them have enough room for more students now, how many of them are experiencing overcrowding, even as we think about how to plan for that future. So in terms of thinking about planning for that future, sixty-two hundred more students, how will we be ready for them? How will our programs, our buildings, our boundaries really be geared towards those future needs? I'm really pleased that we're now gonna hear from, John's gonna tee it up a little bit, and then we're gonna hear from our friends from Center for Public Service and National Policy Consensus Center. And then we'll take questions and comments about this section once they're finished.
Okay, thanks, Judy. So we're gonna move into the second part here, which is, we're gonna hear from our team from Portland State, but I wanted to do a quick bringing us forward from the last time they were here. If you remember, they completed a readiness assessment in which they came to the board at the end of last school year to report on that, which was mostly an externally-focused assessment where they interviewed thirty state, over thirty stakeholders about the, the community's perspective on district-wide boundary review. They also laid out initially, based on our old numbers, the projected enrollment growth and the need to look at our enrollment management. They also reviewed processes that other communities had gone through who were facing similar, a similar challenge. And the, the report had two main conclusions. One was that it recommended a series of options that could be undertaken to, to complete district-wide boundary review, and today, you're gonna hear a more specific recommendation from the PSU Center for Public Service. And they also said that they felt that we needed to undergo an internal alignment phase. So while we got great feedback from the external community, we needed to spend the summer working with our internal stakeholders to identify alignment within the organization. with our internal stakeholders to identify alignment within the organization. And before I turn it over to them, I wanna say that it was, we got excellent participation from across the organization during the summer, when it's typically very difficult to do this kinda thing. I really wanna thank our senior directors in the Office of School Performance. I wanna thank the direct reports to the superintendent. I wanna thank PAPSA, our Principals Association, Administrators of Color, and the Portland Association of Teachers, in particular Suzanne Cohen, who helped pull together alignment sessions, as we called them, with all of those different stakeholders. All of that feedback is, was incorporated into this report. And so with that, I wanna turn it over to Phil Keisling and Wendy Willis from the PSU Center for Public Service.
John, thank you very much. My name is Phil Keisling, Director for the Center for Public Service. If the shorthand version of the enrollment picture is what a difference five years can make, the shorthand for coming here tonight to report on our second phase is what a difference a single year can make in our sense of the readiness of the district to engage in a very comprehensive process for its citizens to address issues such as boundary review. As John mentioned, we spent the summer helping folks within Portland Public Schools system, including members of the board, and we wanna thank everybody for all the time and attention they focused on this very important task to work on issues of alignment and building a foundation for success. And we are especially heartened to come here tonight with the conclusion that the organization now seems ready to launch such a deep and arguably unprecedented citizen engagement effort that certainly involves district-wide boundary review. But we just as strongly recommend that in conducting such an effort, the district not focus solely or even primarily on boundary review. Why is that? Boundary review can and is an important tool in rightsizing schools to create more equitable offerings, but it is clearly not the only, or even the biggest, challenge and opportunity facing the district. As board members, you keenly know, and we heard this repeatedly from all the people we talked to, that boundaries are inextricably linked to key issues such as enrollment and transfer policies that SACAD has been so hard at work at, school facility use, staffing formulas, grade configurations, and of course, the district's foundational racial educational equity policy. There's wide recognition and solid alignment, for example, behind Superintendent Smith's three priorities, meeting third-grade reading levels, accelerating high school graduation, reducing the unacceptably disparate rates of discipline. But while district-wide boundary review can certainly help achieve these important goals, virtually no one told us that district-wide boundary review is a key, or even the primary lever, much less the primary lever, to achieve them. So to launch and then try to confine a deep community conversation to boundary review only, essentially having to put off-limits citizen comments and concerns about all these other linked issues, not only would risk failure, but more importantly, would fail to take advantage of what we see as an exceptional window of opportunity that the district now has to build a strong and sustainable foundation for citizen engagement for years to come across a range of issues. In happy contrast to recent decades of concerns about little to cheer about, this school year starts with more than 400 newly hired teachers, a much stronger financial situation, and arguably the best chance in decades for citizens to feel they can do more than simply hunker down and defend what they have, and try to prevent more of what they value from being taken away, and instead can think about what they can add and improve to make real progress to key goals and their vision, chief among them, the district's racial equity educational policy. So as our report recommends, rather than confine such an engagement process solely to boundary review, the district should frame it as values, growth, and equity conversation, and set explicit and very ambitious goals to ensure a broad diversity of views, something my colleague Wendy Willis will go into more in a moment. Won't being more ambitious bring more risk? As we talked to so many people inside and outside the district, more than 200 of them between our two efforts, we came to the conclusion that it was actually less risky in terms of ensuring long-range to success. So that when the district is ready to move on district-wide boundaries, and we believe this can be as early as 2016, '17 school year as we outlined in our first report, the chances of lasting success in a sustainable framework will be high. You'll find in the report various findings and recommendations, one I especially wanna call your attention to right now, is how the district should deal with the hotspots, the enrollment issues that cannot wait. To that end, we recommend the establishment of a 21-member district-wide boundary review advisory committee, DBRAC, as if we need another acronym, but maybe we do, whose chair is appointed by the superintendent and which is given a precise and clear charge, first and foremost in the near term, to address those acute, acute enrollment issues in a few places, and then later to turn its attention to helping you build on the results of the engagement process to help with larger questions of district-wide boundaries. The makeup of that committee is detailed in the report, and you could see the broad range that's represented here. Finally, other recommendations involve developing a comprehensive and user-friendly website to convey important information in an accessible form, a commitment to ensure baseline program offerings at every school and available to every student, and the articulation of a longer-term equity vision that can be used not just to determine how we best go about district-wide boundaries, but also to operationalize a host of other key decisions. Now I'd like to turn it over to Wendy Willis to talk in more detail about the specific citizen engagement process and its key elements that we recommend.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having us back. We're happy to be here again. I'd like to talk with you a little bit about what some of the details might look like of a large public process with very ambitious goals. As Phil mentioned, one of the things that we found in our internal alignment meetings and in the meetings that we had with external stakeholders during the spring was there's, there is broad and deep commitment to equitable offerings and equity in the district. But how people talk about it, what they mean by that, those things are not necessarily the same. And while there's some, there's, there's more alignment internally than there is externally, there's an opportunity to have a conversation about those issues in a way that we haven't seen in a long time. But as you know, in order to have a conversation about equity and one that is equitably conducted, it takes a different kind of engagement process than has been available to PPS and to other public entities really in the past. So particularly segmented strategies are gonna be necessary to reach underrepresented communities where mistrust is really, really the highest. So you'll see a detail, I know you have a detailed outline in the report of what a public engagement process might look like, but I wanted to point out some of the, the high points. The goals are very ambitious, and that is to reach 40% of families, PPS families across the district, so that at any point, 40% of those families have, have weighed in on, on values, growth, and equity. Engage 50%, so fully half, participation from families from the PPS identified historically underrepresented groups. Engage an average of 40% on a school-by-school basis, so you can't have 80% of one school that balances 0% on another. So each school is, would also be engaged at a 40% level. And then, then really narrow down schools that look like they're likely to have, be affected by district-wide boundary review and have historically underrepresented communities, and gets at least 60% representation there. Those are very ambitious goals, and we know that the, the way that we have conducted public engagement in the past will not lead to these kind of results. And so we've proposed a, what we're really calling, is essentially a community organizing infrastructure that we would encourage the district to adopt some version of now, to be used as an investment in the future. So you'll see some of the details. One of the things about setting such ambitious goals is, with some of the technology that's available, you can check daily to see how you're doing on your demographic goals. So you can, every day, you could say, we know where we are on a school basis, we know where we are district-wide, and we know where we are on historically underrepresented communities, and be very adaptable throughout the process to redeploy resources to those places where the initially tried techniques are not working so far. So it's a way to be both responsive and adaptable. One of the reasons that historically underrepresented communities often aren't represented is the "we tried, but they didn't come" argument, and this is a way to, to redeploy resources in a very different way. And to design processes that are culturally specific and, and driven by leaders in those communities. So we would imagine dozens of partnerships, a lot of listening, and that it would be conducted over a few months in order to allow people to respond in a variety of different ways. That said, there's a lot of outreach that's really differentiated, but then the data would come back into a single instrument that then would be available to you to, to, to both analyze and, and differentiate for years to come, if that's what you wanted to do. So if you got the data back, you could see where the whole district fell, you could see where particular school buildings fell, you could see where demographic groups fell, and you could compare those things. The other thing it does is if there's lack of clarity, you, it allows you to go back and out and have focus groups or conversations to try to get clarity around priorities by, by particular communities. So it's a very specified way of doing engagement. One of the other things we wanted to point out from the recommendation is that we see this as an opportunity for, for PPS and the school buildings to also build social capital as well as just get data. And so to have a very flexible model where in-person events could really be held in an infinite number of ways, and that there'd be a packet available in multiple languages where there could be a deliberative process and people could converse with their neighbors and classmates in order to then go back and, and weigh in on these questions. Finally, we wanna point out that there's an opportunity both for, to engage informal leaders, which we know play a really important role in school buildings, and students who all, can play a really important role in families for, you know, helping younger siblings, helping families that don't speak English, but, and also helping their classmates participate. But in, that, but that those kinds of informal relationships can sow seeds that can last for years to come. So yes, I know this must sound like a lot of work, which, we will say that between, if, between the climate survey that you all have, have authorized and this values proposition, everybody here and everybody in all the buildings would sort of be, need to be focused on this and pulling in the same direction. But that said, we believe that this investment can make a major difference in relationships in the community and in giving you something to work with in the future, so that as those pathways are, are forged, that they're there to be used in any, in any number of ways over time. So that, I think, includes where we are. Oh yeah, sorry about that. I should've turned that. So this, this explains some of the segmentation, where we know that there's a lot of PPS knowledge and relationships with family, and families at a whole bunch of different levels, both at the school level and at the district-wide level. So to think about using those resources to engage families. There are also several contracts with community-based organizations that could be, that could be used and expanded to work on this. We've talked about the informal leaders connections. And then there are many other workers out there who deal, who deal with PPS families, including community health workers and community education workers who are in people's homes, talking with their families, and oftentimes, the issues that come up in those are educational issues. So at any time, those, those resources could be deployed to make sure that people have a chance to participate. I think we can, if we can talk about that.
Actually, I wanna, I'm gonna jump in and speak to this. So what we, when the first draft of this recommendation was brought to me, what we wanted to look at is how do we coordinate this process with the work we know we're already gonna be doing this year, based on the direction of the board to conduct a district-wide climate survey, which will be the first climate survey that the district, we believe the district's conducted in about a decade. So we wanted to look at this as a real opportunity. How do we do both surveys? One which is, we're giving our families an opportunity to give us feedback on their experience at their individual school. So the climate surveys, climate survey instruments that we're reviewing and we're planning on bringing to the climate committee that you've created, ask parents and students to answer a series of questions about their experience and perceptions about their experience at their individual school. So that's the context in which participants in that survey will be answering. I'm a parent at Atkinson Elementary, and so I'll be answering as my experience at that individual school. This survey, the, what we're calling Values, Growth, and Equity Survey is big picture. This is long-term, it involves all of the topics that we've discussed here, and is based on the recommendation that, that comes from both reports, that just doing a community engagement process around district-wide boundary review is not gonna be successful, it'll be frustrating, because there's a desire in the community to provide input and feedback on the long-term plans for the district around a whole host of issues which are all interrelated. So this is the timeline that we've put together for this, and the reality is, both surveys provide our community a really truly historic opportunity to really be engaged in the big questions that we wanna answer here at the district, and that if we do it right, both can build on each other. And the other, the last thing I'd add before I go into this is that in the, in the climate survey instruments that we've been reviewing in, in preparation to bring to the board climate committee, they call for about 20 to 30% district-wide participation for them to be successful. And if you look at other school districts that successfully do climate surveys, they get about that level of participation each year. So that's what we're already gonna be striving for as a district when we do the climate survey. So we looked at how we can use one to build on the other. So what we're proposing is that the DBRAC be convened immediately to begin working with Judy on the hotspots that you're gonna hear about in a minute, on our, our really acute emergency enrollment challenges. And at the same time, we begin work with the Board Climate Committee, which we'll be working with you to schedule meetings soon, on developing the climate survey, the timeline for the climate survey, and the communications and community engagement plan for that survey. So we're gonna have a lead-in to the climate survey where we wanna raise awareness of the community about the opportunity, right? We need to get people ready to take it. It's a new thing that we haven't done district-wide, and we want all of our parents and students to know it's coming, what it's about, and get ready to take the survey. And we also need to develop strategies to reach our historically underserved communities, which aren't gonna be as responsive to a computer survey that's online or an email survey. So we're doing both in-person opportunities at schools, but we're also going out into the community, meeting with different groups, and developing different strategies to get a high level of engagement in the climate survey. So as I said, we're gonna be looking to get about 20 to 30% participation in that survey, hopefully higher, right? Hopefully, we can get it. But that's what the, the successful instruments that other school districts have done call for about that level. So we'll be, the plan is for us to, to launch that awareness-raising and organizing effort right after the first of the year, which would lead into a six-week time period in which the climate survey will be open. So again, we'll keep it open so we can drive and continue to drive participation and awareness in the community, and we can begin to adopt some of the strategies that the PSU Center is recommending here, where we can track it by school, we can go into a school where we have low participation, we can work with parent leaders at that school, community leaders at that school, the principal, the teachers, and encouraging students and families to participate, so we're getting participation from across the district. Once the climate survey closes and goes to our system planning and performance team to begin analyzing that data, then we'll move into another awareness-raising effort to get the community ready and excited to take the Values, Growth, and Equity Survey, so you can see how they can build one on the next. And then that survey will be open for about six to eight weeks, again, where we're really driving the strategies that they're talking about here. I can see us, we, we've been working in community involvement and public affairs already and drafting initial plans where we would be doing, going door-to-door potentially at some schools, where we just aren't getting the participation and we need to get out and, and encourage folks to take the survey. It would also include strategies like take-home packets where people could organize like a party at their home, invite other families at their school to take it and respond. We would translate the survey into all the language, all the languages we translate into, we'd offer it in paper, offer it over online, offer it at a computer terminal in a school if we need to. All of this to try to hit that goal of 40% participation district-wide. And then we would close the survey at the end of April, and then have time for the PSU Center for Public Service to analyze that data and provide us a report, and the results looking to be made, to become public sometime around the end of the year. That information then would go to the District-Wide Boundary Review Advisory Committee, who would then be charged with using that information to begin the district-wide looking at, updating boundaries across the district. So you have, you achieve that goal, but you also provide our community a truly exciting new opportunity to weigh in on the big questions that we're looking at as we're planning for growth and equity in the future.
So that's a lot on the big process and the big picture. There's a little bit more information that we do wanna share with you tonight, that's kind of the reality check, but we thought this would be a good time to pause. kind of the reality check, but we thought this would be a good time to pause, see what kind of questions you have, and hear from you if that's okay. And then, but keep in mind, we do want to come back and talk briefly about our urgent issues before we conclude this entire presentation. So is Chair Knowles, are you ready for questions now? And then we'll conclude the rest.
Are you ready for questions now?
We are. We really want to know what you think.
Okay. Board comments, questions? It looks like nobody has a question. Director Kurler?
So I mean, I appreciate the interrelation between the two. Just to be clear, from my standpoint, the climate survey is not a one-off thing. It's institutionalized, 360 yearly instrument, exercise, engagement, call it what you want, that involves the parents and the students and the teachers, so the whole, the whole And getting that right is critical. So I mean, you guys connected the dots, and I think appropriately, so. So just the one thing that, and I would hope that PSU would be helpful to you, John, as you bring to us what that survey would look like, and they would incorporate some of these things. So just right off the top of my head is they, you know, you had a goal of 40 percent minimum, I think, and you're saying we'd be successful at 20 to 30. So you know, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page on all of it.
Let me just clarify. What I'm saying is in the instruments, we've been looking at other districts in preparation to bring this to the board climate committee. So that's one thing I want to clear. We know we'll be working with the board committee on this. That the surveys we've looked at that other districts have used, they say you need to try to get 20 to 30 percent participation. We're actually setting a higher goal for ourselves than what those surveys say that we should do. I just want to be clear about that. And I also want to say that we agree about the annual basis for that. And one thing I really appreciate, and I'll let Wendy speak to this, is that this recommendation, it says in the report, would put PPS in a position, because of the work it takes to do this right, to be able to do a robust community engagement process annually, for example, around a climate survey that becomes annual, and not have to do this level of work again because we've developed the infrastructure to do it. So it actually sets us up to do this more regularly on an annual basis.
Right. And so I, so where I, I'm total agreement on all that, and so where my question is on, do you, it seems like we're turning around and then, you know, boom, boom. And is there a way, is that too much overload to people? And can you, can we get what we want through a great climate survey? And maybe the answer is no, but I just wanted to hear the dialogue around that.
One thing that we know and have learned about public behavior when it comes to these kinds of surveys is they, actually, the more the public hears from the public entity, the better the participation rate is. And so, in fact, in some ways, they said, people who study these things say that if they hear from you once a month, that's a really good way to keep people participating with you. So if we could use these to build on each other, then with the sort of promise that another climate survey will come next year and maybe budget, you know, whatever comes in between, it appears that public behavior actually improves with each successive activity, particularly if the public entity is responsive to what they hear.
Hi. Exciting stuff. I wanted to ask, I have one comment and then I had two kind of questions. First, in terms of the community engagement, it's incredibly exciting for us to be out doing this. I know that there's been a couple of times, as I've been on the board, that we've gone out and done pretty massive listening sessions with our community. We did it before we hired Vicky Phillips, we did it before we hired Carol as superintendent, and we did it after we failed with our 2011 bond by half a percentage point. And in each of those times, I think that we were closer to the community than I felt at other times, when you have the opportunity to sit and mostly listen. I mean, we say engage, I don't know if engage means engage or if it means listen. I hope it means mostly listening. So I'm actually really excited about this process, and I think we'll learn a ton if we don't get defensive. And that's the big thing, is not to get defensive, just to hear. So I had two questions. One is, I participated a while back in a city club, Think Out Loud event related to the Oregon Values and Beliefs survey that's done every 10 years, and I was kind of the education representative. And I recall that they talked quite a bit about, you know, a pessimism gap, you know, what people want in terms of parent engagement and what they expect, what people want in terms of civic education versus what they get, that sort of thing. But what I really remember is I'm doing a lot of comparisons between sort of rural Oregon and the Portland metro area and the rest. And so my first question is, is there anything to be gained by us talking with Davis Hibbits, who did that survey and who has done it for years, you know, every decade, to see what they could maybe share with us about our process and, you know, how the mood has changed over the decades? Is there anything to gain from doing that engagement?
Yes. I think that's a really great idea, especially in thinking about how to frame the questions based on what they learned from that data. The Oregon Values and Beliefs survey, actually, the public engagement piece went through Oregon's Kitchen Table. So we have a very close relationship with Davis Hibbits.
Could you explain to people what Oregon Kitchen's Table is?
So Oregon's Kitchen Table is a standing piece of online infrastructure where, so if you say you sign up for Oregon's Kitchen Table and say, "I'm willing to engage with public entities and leaders who'd like my opinion on a whole variety of topics," and you can either do it statewide or you can do it down to the local level. And so there, you know, there's already several thousand people from Portland area that have signed up for Oregon's Kitchen Table. So they're available already for this kind of process. The thing we do know is that is not the only, that can't be the only strategy, that all these other strategies are necessary to get particularly underrepresented communities. But the thing that it does give you is a place to put all that data and aggregate it so that all, so that you're not losing what's happening in these in-person events. So that's where it all kind of lands eventually. So that's, so I think it's a great idea to work with Davis Hibbits, talk to them about getting some of the cross tabulations from Values and Beliefs.
Okay. That's awesome. Thank you. And then I had a question, if you could put up the slide about the DBRAC members. I had a question about that because I love in general what I'm seeing here. I had a couple of questions. One would be a PPS communications person on, as part of the membership. One would be potentially Portland Community College or Higher Ed Representative on here, might be SMART. I'm not sure if it fits as well with the boundary discussion, but I think it does. And probably the most important one that I was thinking about is pre-K Head Start or Special Ed, because one of the things that we've found as we have boundary issues come up, it's those groups that are often pushed out or moved. You know, either your Head Start program, it's easy to take one or two of those classes and move them somewhere else, it's easy to take a Special Ed class and move it somewhere else, and yet for those particular students, that's incredibly hard. So I guess I'm interested in maybe looking at those two populations in particular that seem to be overly disadvantaged when we have boundary issues that come up. And I don't know, when you look at the three appointees of the superintendent, you know, maybe we have some fudge room in there to add one or two other people, but I just wanted to give you those suggestions anyway.
Thank you.
So I would add a couple more to that since Bob had brought that piece up. I'm looking for classified union as well as PAT. And you're also missing a student rep.
Do you have SuperSight?
Mina was about to jump on that.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Those are low points.
Thank you.
Is that, were those all your questions?
Yeah, that's for now.
Steve?
If we set up a system to gather all this data, then, and to get all these opinions on things, how do we guarantee that the questions are giving us accurate opinions? I don't know, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the TEL survey that they did, tens of thousands of teachers. I thought they had two pretty good questions on that out of the, wouldn't they have maybe 100 questions? There were probably two pretty good questions. The rest of them were pretty much worthless. A lot of them were set up to get what they wanted, and I, I'm sorry, we don't have a tendency around here to do that, to go forward and say, "Okay, let's kind of open this up and really hear what's going on." It'd be nice, but I don't know how we're going to do that. This, who's putting together the survey?
So I can tell you how we've done it in the past, is we work with a, this actually takes, this is one of the most time-consuming pieces of the preparation, which is working with the entity who's asked for the survey, the consultation, and passing that thing around to everyone you can think of to say, is this, and in fact, if there are contrasting arguments that you're trying to try to evaluate, say, is this or is this not your best argument? To make sure that the advocates have their best arguments in, and that everybody, and before you push send, that there's a deep consensus around that this is the best, that this is the best you can do. And it is a time-consuming process. Oftentimes, we've asked stakeholders, community members, advocates to actually review these surveys before they ever go out. So it takes kind of a long time, actually. So we start to work, we start to propose, but then really dozens of iterations between the time you start to write, you know, draft, and the time it actually goes out.
And I'll add that I think it's a very important question, that the point of this is not to, the point of this is to elicit what your patrons, the citizens, district, students, parents, et cetera, what they really believe and think and what they value. That may mean making some forced choices in terms of the question design. It may mean learning some things that may be at odds with what you might have wanted to hope that you would learn. But that's the integrity of it, is to try to get at what people value and how they feel about these key issues.
If you go out to a real wide range of people, here's where I think there's a, the difficulty becomes. If you go to a real wide range of people, they don't even know who's sitting on the school board. They don't know one member or the other. I've met a whole bunch of those people this evening from Beverly. Clearly, can't tell you philosophically the differences between the people sitting on the school board, which have this huge effect on what's taking place. And so when you go out, you get people who really don't have any idea what's going on. They have attitudes about certain small things, but when you get a large survey, a lot of that survey is not covered, of course. And so what happens quite frequently is that the survey questions end up not taking that into account and eliciting the responses that we want to get that make us look good and do what we want to do. And so for me, for me, that's going to where, that's going to be where I'm going to be looking to see if it works, and this is a huge effort, but it's not worth the time and energy if we're going to approach it that way. If we're not going to approach it with an open mind, with open questions, really looking to see around these particular questions. For instance, here's a perfect example, is the testing in the school district. I cannot talk hardly to a parent who likes the testing, yet we, as a body, we kind of, I don't mean the school board, but this whole building pushes the testing. But you can't find a parent or a teacher hardly that thinks it's really a positive aspect. So do you ask, if you ask that question and it comes back and nobody cares about the answer anyhow, that's another problem, too. So, I mean, for me, that's kind of where I'm going to be going, is looking at that big effort, lot of time, is it going to be worthwhile? Only if we approach it that way. And I haven't seen us approach almost anything that way in the year I've been on this board, on the school board, not one time, hardly. Once, maybe, on a little bit of some stuff. So there you go.
Director Bilal?
I just wanted to start off by saying thank you. This is, I thought it was actually really affirming of all the work that's been done up to this, and I actually get really excited because I think since the time I've been on the school board, I've been trying to figure out a way, how do we build both, like, the three or four or the five issues that you say are inextricably linked, whether that's grade configuration, and we haven't had the vehicle to do this. And so I appreciate both your hearing the feedback about how do we step back and say, you know, if we force this as just a district-wide boundary conversation, we're already changing the outcome of what we can do. In fact, it's going to, it's going to result in bad feelings and not going to be very successful. So I'm really excited about that, and I'm hopeful that once we make this investment, and this is only possible because we are in a time of growing enrollment with a different state environment, but at this time that we can build an infrastructure of parent engagement that is very different than what has traditionally been seen in this organization, and that super excites me. So along with my colleagues, I'm looking very closely at what are the informal networks? And those are very ambitious, 40 percent of every school, 50 or 40 percent of the whole district, 50 percent of underserved. Those are fantastic. Love to see them higher, and those are very ambitious. I had one question, which will probably, probably relates more to what we're about to talk about, but I just wanted to clarify that all these enrollment projections assume current assumptions such as growth patterns and particularly capture rates. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So for example, if we build a new school and all of a sudden a lot of people are really excited and start attending that school, that's going to affect these enrollment projections.
Yes. And when our graduation rate rises substantially, we're going to have more kids.
Right.
All of those things could influence it.
Right. So I guess I'll just leave it at that, but thank you for this work. I think it's really well done, and I appreciate the articulation of it. I think that if people take time to read the report, they will find themselves in it or find something that resonates really clearly with them. And I know that we're coming up on some of the hotspots, which we have some guests here for tonight, which might have different feelings about it, but at least it's raising the issues that we need to articulate and be clear about.
I want to make one comment because something you said, Director Bilal, to me relates to a point that Director Buehl was making, which is 40 percent is, I mean, it's really ambitious. And there's a lot of places I've worked in my background in community organizing where I wouldn't even come to a public meeting and ever suggest you're going to get there. I firmly believe our community is so engaged in our schools and is so hungry to weigh in on the future of the school district that we can get there. But to do it, it also requires us to ask real questions that people want to weigh in on. So if we're going to hit 40 percent, we can't put out a survey that somebody looks at and says, "Oh, okay, well, they're not asking me the important questions." So hitting the goals and putting out a survey that's truly getting at the questions our community wants to weigh in on, that relate to boundary review, enrollment and transfer, equitable program offerings, all those things, they are inextricably linked to each other. But I firmly believe that the school district here in Portland is, we can hit those kinds of targets because we have engagement at that level every single day in this district, it's just around different things. So this is going to be a matter of saying, "Hey, we need you to take this eight to 10 minutes to fill out this survey," or do it however it works with your community so that we can have our finger on the pulse of where the, where our parents, our families, our teachers are on these big questions before we make big decisions like a district-wide boundary changes.
Sure. Just a real quick follow-up, as I am sure some other people's minds have gone, what are, how do we anticipate if we're going to have paper and we're going to have computer with, you know, I could take a survey three different, on three different times and be a different person according to the computer? How are we going to control for making sure that somebody doesn't wait it one way or another?
The police. How we have done it in the past is, well, how we do it typically is there, you have a unique link for your survey. So it comes to you, you have a unique link, and then it dies as soon as you've used it. And so online, there's, you don't have access to it again. With the paper surveys, there is less control. We do have a little honor system where we say, I, you know, you signed something saying, "This is the only time I filled this out." And I have to say, we've never had a situation, a ballot stuffing situation. Typically, the paper surveys are used by communities that have never engaged, and so the idea that they would start engaging multiple times seems unlikely. And so I think that's probably the best answer that we can give you.
Ms. Matt?
Thank you for coming, and it seemed like the, the last time you came and gave an update, it seemed like the writing was on the wall, that in fact, there were more variables than just the boundary that we needed to talk about. Your, the wordle. there were more variables than just the boundary that we needed to talk about. Your, the wordle, you know, drives it home, I think, with, with all the things we have to, all the things we have to consider. I want to say quickly, I really, I do, again, will echo and appreciate the, the level of engagement that is, is planned on in this. I think that your, your strategy is exactly, is exactly right on. But most of my questions are, I think, are around the, what, you know, we call the hotspots. And, and one of the things that is interesting to me, or maybe one of the questions that I'll have, so think about this as we go into this next section, is I, I keep on remembering that adage of, when all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. And, and I think that if it's true that we have more tools in our toolbox on a longer-term process, how different is that on a shorter-term process? Do we, in a, in the shorter term, do we have fewer tools? And if we do, why? So that would be, that would be my question, is we're talking about, you know, hotspots, immediate needs, urgency, all of those things in enrollment challenges. So I'd like to know, as we, as we talk about that, what are the, what are the variables and how are we considering those variables? As a little preview to my future questions.
Sure, yeah.
So I'll, Dr. Bial, I agree with everything you said. I guess you also had a couple of pieces, so thank you so much for this. Couple of pieces in your report that we haven't talked about as explicit yet. One was the, for having, providing a website that provided more, um, easy to access data for each school. So we have, you know, a big book that comes out every year, a lot of work goes into creating that, but it sounds like repurposing that into something that's more user-friendly and provides, really, to be clear, what actually is available across different schools. Because I think, as you point out, there's a lot of distrust that there is a differing level. And some of these, there are based on differing, the ability, there's, we have our equity investment, we have foundations and so forth. So, appreciate that a lot, as well as the actual work that it will take to make sure that we have clarified all that and made that public. So I guess, to me, I mean, so we've got the establishment and facilitation of the DBRAC. We've got this engagement process that you've outlined, including the climate survey, and we've got the work to kind of coordinate and update and make more user-friendly, all the information about each school. And that's a lot. And so you point out in the report that district staff are already working pretty much at capacity and have any number of initiatives. And we've got our work plan. It will be approving tonight with a whole range. And that just is the top, very top things, and there's a million others. So I guess just to, to flag that and to ask, you know, as the superintendent is looking at moving this forward, or whatever that process is, and I'm not entirely clear whether this is to you, and then it goes forth, that there's going to be a budget implication and we, and, and I think there needs to be recognition that this takes a lot of work on top of the hard work that is already happening in this building. So, I mean, very excited to see it happen. I just wanted to, to recognize that. And there, there's gonna, needs to be some additional capacity on top of the, the jobs that folks are already doing. But I'm really excited to see it, to see it happen.
Okay. Well, I'll say thank you also. I don't think it was any big surprise to me that you told us that we needed to do more than just boundary review. I think we've been looking at that for quite some time. I did have one concern as I looked through this. I, I was worried about what's happening to the rest of our community. Because this focuses on the schools and the people who are in the schools, but I had, I had students in Portland Public Schools for nineteen years, but I don't anymore. But I'm on the school board, so clearly I still care. And I know that we have eighty percent of our population really cares. And so my concern is that we are, that we listen to that group as well, both those who do not yet have students in Portland Public Schools and those who have gone all the way through and are still interested in supporting the schools. And so I'm asking, you know, how are we reaching out to that group of people?
So we, recommendations that we would make to you is that you, that if anybody who lives in your zip codes can weigh in. So, you know, whether children are, whether they have children in PPS or not, are available to weigh in. And that, that we broadly encourage people to participate, but that the resources, the organizing resources, really be focused on guardians, parents, and students within Portland Public Schools. But that it certainly is, and, and that you would then be able to differentiate. I mean, you'd ask people, do you have, do you or do not have a child in Portland Public Schools? And then you could say, this is where people without children in, in PPS fall, and this is where people with, with children fall.
Yeah. And we did not set explicit goals for those other populations, but just an example, what the values, growth, and equity concerns are of people that believe they're likely to have kids in the future in the Portland Public Schools is really important information to have.
Right.
And what is nice about this tool is you can differentiate between those with kids and those without or to come. And you can compare those. And I think that's going to be part of the robustness of this and why it will be very valuable going forward. And you then, of course, can cross-check as you do the annual climate surveys, which we recommended, I think, in the first report, and very glad to hear of the interest in, in having that continue going forward.
So I'm going to continue to be very interested in how we reach out to the rest of the community. I don't know if that's gathering our partners. I see eighty percenters up there in the back, and there are others to, to grab those people. But, you know, eighty percent of our community is eighty percent. Only twenty percent of our community have children in school. So I'm going to be very interested in that as we go forward. So thanks.
Sorry, I had a clarifying question. Mr. Round, you mentioned absolutely rightly that the configure, grade configuration and program needs to be part of this. So I just wanted to clarify, would that be under the DBRAC's charge, that they would be, have the ability to make recommendations around potential changes in configurations and programs? Or would that be a different, would they strictly be limited to boundary changes? And how would that?
I think we envision it that they, that this would be focused on boundaries, because it's going to be complex enough.
Right.
But I can imagine a situation where DBRAC hears a situation that involves, involves grade configuration and says, you know, back to Superintendent Smith, this seems to be a grade configuration issue that we can't solve just with boundaries. And so that, that conversation, you know, continue.
So that, they would, might be sort of the conduit, I mean, just been part of the issue, that there hasn't been a place as, as lo, as well as the issues around perceptions and/or reality of inequable program offerings, and just that whole balance of what's available in every single school regardless. But at the same time, equitable, you know, equity is not equal. And how are we having some variation that is reasonable between our schools, yet is transparent, and the folks are aware of it? So there hasn't been a place for those concerns or the issue of, of configuration changes to come forward. And I wasn't sure if that would be the committee, or I just didn't want that, this huge issue to get lost. And there's, there's already a lot, a lot that would be going on. So, I'll just put it out there.
Are there anything else for us? Do you have, you have the next phase, right?
Well, yes. Because we couldn't just leave on that, you know, the high note of the future. We're going to go ahead and take a few minutes to say, you know, we've got some reality checking that we, that we're going to be doing right now. And so you can anticipate some things happening in the coming months. Overarching assumptions, similar, somewhat similar to last year's, is that to, to the degree possible, we're going to keep changes minimal so that we can be better informed and really start using more effectively the, the things that come out of that community process. However, places that are seeing acute enrollment issues now, where you can't concentrate on education and achievement for kids because you don't have enough space for the kids, we may need to make some changes there. And we're not here to recommend any changes for you tonight. But I did want to show you the list of schools that are likely to be ones where we would have to consider some degree of change. There shouldn't be any surprises up here. I'm sorry to say, we didn't resolve all these things last year. But they're not new. The two, the second-tier schools closer to the bottom are ones that are on our watch list, sort of really chronic issues that could, fifty more students than any one of those schools could, could create a real problem. But we think that there's probably enough space for all of them to continue next year without change. We're looking more closely at that. On the tier-one schools, though, that's the ones at the top, that's where it's more likely that they're going to have more students next year than what they have appropriate classroom spaces designated for. These are all schools where we've made some level of significant change before, and we've got some tough choices ahead of us. To Director Morton's comments, our choices remain the same. We are going to look and see, so let me just flip, yeah, here we go. What we'll be doing particularly over the next month is working with our principals, the senior directors, facility staff, and program staff to figure out what the need is, not just now, but going into next year. If there were no changes next year, could you live with it? And where it doesn't appear that they can live with it as configured, we would work together to identify options first for any kind of internal building or program changes. Is there anything we can change or move that just, that'll help us get by? It's, it's a duct tape approach. And if there aren't any, then we're going to have to go to the set of major changes. And major changes could be moving a program, moving some kids who are in that building because of a program to a different location. It could be a major facility upgrade, including placing modular classrooms there, which we have a minimal amount of budget for, are very expensive, and may be there long after the enrollment problem gets resolved. And then, of course, there's the possibility that we could look at doing a boundary change. So, once we come back with some of those kinds of suggestions, as warranted to the superintendent, she and possibly you, depending on the scope of the change, would need to make those decisions before we get into our annual budget staffing transfer cycle. So that's the timeline that we're looking at. Specifically, a little bit about boundary change, because you heard about the potential for a DBRAC. Most boundary changes involve multiple schools, go beyond the scope of what you can do in that building. That's what a boundary change is. It says, take some of these kids and involve another school in their educational future. And that's really outside what our preferred scope of activities is this year in advance of that growth, values, and equity process. But we'll go there in places where we think it would be most effective. So I'm just going to lay out an exception here, which I know you heard some public comments about as well, that could be, and it really is just a could be at this point, establishing a starting point for a neighborhood boundary for the Rose City Park School, because we are using it as the third campus for the Beverly Cleary School and are heavily invested in resources to maintain that. We haven't thought effectively about what the grade structure would be, where the lines would be drawn. It's just an idea. Anything that looks like a relatively concrete idea that you could take for a boundary review, we would want to go ahead and activate the DBRAC to help us work through that possibility. So, in the case of Beverly Cleary, maybe one, maybe even two of the other schools that were on that tier-one list, we would ask them to take a look at what, what the options are, how boundary change would fit at an op, as an option, and give us advice back. Obviously, if it were a boundary change, all of that would have to come back to you before it got approved. But we don't necessarily expect that DBRAC would take on every kind of decision around an internal move, shifting classroom space, and the like. Definitely, we would want them to be involved if something had to do with boundary. So that is a sense of where, what you can expect to be hearing more about in the coming weeks to months on our, on our hotspots. All of that in the, hopefully, in the bigger service, in the service of having a broader process that can help us establish a way to manage for that growth and for all those new kids in the future. That's it.
Any other questions? Dr. Regan, Bobby?
Hi. On your previous slide, when you said steps to diagnose and address enrollment problems, my concern with number one, especially when you're identifying options or developing major change proposals, is who you're working with. And I don't see parents on there. I don't see impacted, uh, community members, affected community members, neighborhood associations, all of that. So I would like that to be broader. And I think a lot of the parents can, you know, come up with some good and creative ideas to help us through this. But I'd also like you to add board members to it. So, for example, on West Sylvan, there was a meeting last week, there's a meeting this week about, you know, they're a tier-two school and some of the possible changes that are going to have to happen. And I heard about it from a woman who stopped me when I was walking my dog. That's not how I, as a board member, should hear about things in my zone or generally. So I just ask staff to be really mindful that we are out in the community all the time. And if you're talking about Beverly Cleary, be sure that you have the school board member who's specifically in that zone, but even more broadly, let us know when meetings are happening, so we have an opportunity to participate as possible.
Thank you for those suggestions. And I want to point out that we do consider the first couple steps in number one, a largely internal process. Where's the problem? How many classrooms are you going to need next year? I mean, those are largely technical. And we're going to do the best we can to say there's very little that has to be addressed for next year. But all of these schools are experiencing discomfort now. All of the communities are definitely invested in making it work as well as they can for the teachers and the kids who are in those classrooms every day. So we certainly wouldn't get deeply into number two, let alone number three, without having some community discussions about that. Sometimes the community's having discussions about it we don't even know about. But, but when it comes time for us to start saying, here's the way that we could do this, what do you think? We'll want to make sure that they're in the loop. And so to the, to, we absolutely will. And didn't intend to leave them out. I was probably a little short started, sighted in the writing of it.
It's fine. I just want to make sure it's called out.
Thanks for the heads up on the, on the West Sylvan meeting, too. Thank you.
Wednesday is the next one. It was last Wednesday, was the last one.
Thank you.
Dr. Buell?
I appreciate Bobby who continues to ask my questions just in front of me. She's really on top of stuff. She did leave out teachers, however, on her excellent question. The fact that it's a technical thing, I don't think it has much to do with involving people up front. I think you bring in parents and teachers, and principals, and senior directors, facilities, and program staff, all up front at the beginning, because that's what gets you the trust of the community. When you go out and say, here's what we think should take place, and the community goes, wow, they already made up their mind. Instead of involving those people up front, we were talking, boy, my memory is so bad, I can't remember exactly when it was, but we're talking to some of those immersion programs, I think. We, we didn't even, we didn't even involve the teachers in a real conversation. And I don't mean a conversation where the principal goes out and says, this is what we're thinking, da-da-da. Go out and ask those teachers what they think, and figure out how you're going to free them up to get real answers. Because right now, once we give them that suggestion, then you're never going to get real answers. And you need to figure out, and it's the same to a certain degree with the parents, though not to the same degree as it is with the teachers. The teachers don't want, they don't want to go against what the answer is. So we don't get the real answers. And I think those people need to be up front personally. I'm going to continue to push for that. And someday, maybe we'll even get there. That would be nice.
Thank you, Director Buell.
Thank you.
And the second, the second line underneath number one, that identifying options for internal building and program changes. In my experience, where we've done the best at that is when we've taken the problem quickly to teachers and got their input on it. They're the ones using the space, and they always have a lot of, of really creative ideas for how things could change. They always bring up something that we, we wouldn't have thought of otherwise. So that's a routine.
I think it's great. I just think they ought to be up front, on number one, not on number two. And that's my own opinion.
They're in the middle of number one.
Number one, the one that says identify options.
The second dash line on number one, it's a routine.
Okay, for that one, that's what you said.
So then the senior director and me or someone else, like, we go to a staff meeting and we say, we understand you're crowded, here's how the numbers look, here's what it's looking like for next year. The principal is right there, we're all talking together. What's this feel like for you and what can we do about it? Is, is part of that routine.
Be nice.
Other, other comments? Director Martin?
So if we take a step back from that, I'm, I, I think I have a good idea of how we begin the conversation when enrollment is low. But I'm interested in who pulls the fire alarm on the, when enrollment is high, when it becomes, you know, quote, uncomfortable. when it becomes, you know, quote, uncomfortable. Uh, and uncomfortable to the point where it becomes a tier one versus a tier two. Uh, and, and that may help me, I mean, I can, I really appreciated your comment of, uh, it begins to get in the way of education. So I, I guess I wanna unpack that a little bit. And who pulls that alarm and says, okay, it's getting in the way of educating our youth. We need to move forward with this.
Um, so our experience is that the principals are, um, the strongest level of advocates for the conditions in their building. And it's their relationship with the senior directors and program directors in this building that's the primary route to that. We're also doing, so it's sort of, it's, um, it's top down, if you will, where you've got people like me looking at enrollment numbers, looking at the class sizes per grade level, looking at how many they had last year, comparing it to the, you know, looking, 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 right? So you've got, you've got that, and it's combining with the voices that we're getting from the schools, from the principals or from teacher leaders, from community members, saying, this is what we're experiencing. We're checking, we're saying, mm, okay, the data's trending like that, or wow, that's really different than what we think we're seeing in the data. We need to understand better what's going on. And then it's those two things coming together. That's what normally is happening in late October, early November. And then it's around between Thanksgiving and Christmas that we're coming back to you with that priorities list. Tonight is an indication that we're already trying to get ahead of that timeline, because there were so many issues that didn't get resolved last year. And because we're trying to create an environment where we can reset the whole process um, without expending so much energy this year on, um, solving a thousand problems in a thousand different ways. So, um, I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah.
What moves a school from a tier one to a tier two? It's about listening at this time of year. It's about checking data, but also listening. So, the first week of school, the emails, um, from me to principals, and, and they were great at responding when they could, is, I'm seeing your numbers are high, how's it feeling? Oh, five kindergartens this year, tell me how you're doing it. So, um, and I'm not the only voice on it. I would say our senior directors, um, Tony Magliano and his facilities team and others are the on-the-ground folks who are trying to put all these pieces together so that the priority list is as tight as it has to be. Um, but, and really reflects on the kinds of issues that, uh, if we don't address them, you may see an impact on, on achievement in those environments.
So I think the only other question that, not question, but, but comment, but maybe something to think about as we continue to look at this is, um, how we reconcile the voices that are saying, well, no, actually, your, um, uncomfortable is our cozy. Uh, where this doesn't, uh, this doesn't feel like my child is getting anything less. Um, but we're concerned with our children getting something less if a change occurs, because I think there's a lot of fear associated with that change. Thank you. So that would be my, that reconciliation. How do we, um, how do we manage that? And how do we, how do we incorporate that into the decision-making process?
Dr. Buehl?
So this is where more of my questions come in. So a couple of things that, um, I'll start with, um, some of the tier two schools. Um, I noticed, just kind of been reading through them, five of, five of the nine schools that are there are K eights. And this goes back to that point that these issues are inextricably linked, right? But, so then I was surprised that as we move further even into your, into the PSU report, that it was, that D-BRAC was charged with starting a bound- a boundary change for, for example, Beverly Cleary. Rather than looking at, maybe it's a grade configuration issue or some other, it wasn't look for a solution, it was charge them immediately with fixing that boundary. And I don't, I don't know if that's the answer or not, but it, it just, it made me wonder, um, especially when I said, like, the, again, Beverly Cleary is a tier one, so it, it's not a tier two that can wait. But it just highlighted the importance of how inextricably linked those two are. And, um, what I took away from Director's more comment about a hammer is, right, are we, are we still looking to always use that boundary change instead of looking at other options? The, the second, um, question I had, I didn't wait for an answer, is, do you wanna comment? I don't know that there is a comment, but I also don't wanna ask a question in that.
Specifically to the question about, are we always looking at boundary change? The answer is no. In fact, it's my understan- I have been advised by many community members, internal staff, even from board members, that we need to have a way to use boundary change more effectively and do less of the internal reconfigurations, less of paying for facility changes, if we can have effective boundary changes. So we're trying to move in a direction where boundary changes are actually more effective in the future. The list that we have, the schools that you're seeing here, we don't think boundary change is a short-term advisable solution for most. Any place that there might be an exception to that where boundary change would make sense, we would wanna activate the D-BRAC sooner rather than later, get their feet wet, um, to get that going.
Just one, how, I think, uh, on this initial round of work for D-BRAC before at district-wide, I think, um, what we envisioned is there'd be some screening process at the staff level saying, it looks like a boundary change might be a likely solution to this, and send those problems to D-BRAC. And if, uh, if, if D-BRAC got into that and said, you know, I don't think boundary review, boundary change is the right thing here, then it would go back to the staff level and, and some of these other things would be activated. So I, I would imagine it as a kind of iterative process, um, that you, you might go back and forth depending on it. Once people start to delve into the details, that, um, that then it would change.
Right, with a caution of that if you send a problem to a district boundary review committee, um, the chances of them sending it back and saying, never mind, we're not gonna look at the district, might, might be a challenge.
I don't know, I think I'd rather send it back to you.
It could be that we get them all back. Um, the, the second question is, is actually really just a reiteration of what Director Regan was saying is, there's a paragraph right before we get to tier one schools about, um, the challenge we have in finding space of growing and changing programs citing new language immersion programs and supporting facility needs for special education in multiple pathways. Again, I feel like in the past, those have been, because they're more standalone programs, we tend to ship them around more often, and they're usually with some of our more fragile or more, um, disengaged students, to whom it's more important for that stability. Um, so as we go through this, I guess I just wanna be really attentive that they don't wind up taking the shorter end, um, of what we would consider the best options. And the final question I had was, there's also, um, one of the tier one schools is Kelly Elementary, and there's a, um, note in here that X percent of students are out, from out of district. Do we know what percent of students those are? It, it just says X percent of students.
Russian immersion students.
For the Russian immersion. I think it might be a placeholder, I don't.
That's really embarrassing.
No, that's okay.
Um, I believe it's fifty-seven percent. It's just over half.
Out of district.
That's really embarrassing.
I just, I wanna highlight that for us as, as colleagues, because last year when we were asked about enrollment, um, open enrollment, um, we, we chose to allow a second, um, a second kindergarten there, uh, which exacerbates this problem, so we, we find those tensions.
I'll send that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you've laid out, all the different challenges in these different schools and the different possibilities. And echoing what Director Buehl said, I mean, that you've very thoughtfully pointed out that, um, for instance, at Sitten, where we just put a Head Start, and that's contributing to the great success of that school, where we have a very vulnerable population that's located far away. So, that you've incorporated all those complexities and challenges and concerns. Um, so again, just so I understand, though, the D-BRAC would be the one who would be looking at each of these challenges? Are you, I'm just unclear, because in the past, you and your department have gone out and done a process in each area that has been identified as the must-deal-with spot.
So, going back to this, um, one, two, three, a lot of work in number one, that's at the building level. Things that are getting into number two, where we can't resolve within the building. Anything that's related to boundary, we would activate D-BRAC around both. I don't think that we would activate them around, for example, a program change. A decision on whether, um, for example, um, uh, we have Creative Science and Head Start that share a building, and we would love it if there was enough space for all of the kids next year, but we don't think there is. So there's some important conversations that have to be, um, held between both those program staff. Um, but I don't think that we would ask D-BRAC necessarily to weigh in on a program location. Not at this time, not when we're trying to move them and bring them up to speed about everything they would need to know mostly about boundaries. Um, that doesn't mean they don't need to know that there are other things that are happening, there are other ways to resolve issues, this is what it's, it's, it's looking like. But at this point, we want a boundary re- review body, um, to assist us in this process long-term. It isn't clear where the overlap is between, um, all of these different moving parts. It's clear that it hasn't been clear in the past, and that one of our jobs is to make it so. I don't know that this singular advisory committee as an oversight board would be the, necessarily the way to do that. We still have some to learn.
One, one way I would, you might look at it as you would not want a situation where a boundary review was recommended and the answer from D-BRAC was, well, we never looked at that. And in fact, you might see this as any time you get to a point where a boundary review is a serious possibility, that you wanna make sure that D-BRAC has fully vetted it and made a recommendation specific to whether a boundary review, boundary change in this particular situation is in their judgment warranted. And that's, I think, one of the, one of the reasons that we thought that a D-BRAC was important, because that is a very consequential kind of move, especially in the short term, when you haven't yet done district-wide.
So Judy, am I correct in, um, my thinking that the D-BRAC is boundaries? We'll go through and we'll have these two surveys, we'll learn more about what the community thinks, and that's where we talk about grade configurations and some of those other issues? Is that correct? So that discussion is not happening until after the surveys? Great, thank you. Just so long as it happens. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you again. And really appreciate all your hard work and your time you take to come and talk to us about it. Look forward to having an ongoing relationship, it looks like. Okay, so at this time, we'll move on to our next, um, agenda item, and that would be achievement compacts. Uh, so we'll receive recommendations from the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would. So for the, to present the Achievement Compact, Amanda Whalen, who's the Chief of Staff. Um, Sarah Singer, who is our Senior Director of System Planning and Performance. Suzanne Cohen, who is Vice President of Portland Association of Teachers. And Melissa Goff, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, will present, um, their, the work of the Achievement Compact Committee, Advisory Committee.
And do we have something new, uh, at our place tonight, or is everything unsettled?
You have a couple things. You have, I believe, a PowerPoint, and then this morning, we received guidance around setting the investment targets that was different than the assumptions that we had made. So you received updated investment targets.
Thank you.
So, um, good evening, I'm Amanda Whalen, Chief of Staff.
Melissa Goff, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
I'm Sarah Singer, Senior Director of System Planning and Performance.
Suzanne Cohen, Middle School Teacher, Vice President, AT, committee member.
So, uh, so the four of us are gonna try and tag-team through this presentation. Um, so I should make clear from the beginning that Melissa and I are long timers.
Before, before you go any further, can we go ahead and clear the back so that we can hear what's happening here? There we go, thank you. That makes it a little easier to hear you.
So Melissa and I are both longtime members of the, to the, longtime people involved in the Achievement Compacts, but I wanna say that Sarah and Suzanne are both new this year to the Achievement Compact, so just wanna give that as a little bit of a preference, preface. Sarah and I are gonna walk you through the data and the methodology, and Melissa and Suzanne are gonna be talking through some of the strategies that our committee's discussed over the years and also available to answer any questions that you may have. So just as a little bit of background information, the Oregon Education Investment Board designed the Achievement Compacts for all K-12 districts. They're intended to focus funding and strategies at the state and local level toward achievement of the state's education goals. And the committee with the board guidance has opted to set ambitious targets. So this is a list of the people who are on the committees. We have Melissa, Suzanne, Von Trong, Michael Bauer, Carl Logan, Matthew Olson, Elizabeth Casson-Taylor, Elizabeth Teal, Molly Chun, Terry Harrington, and Peyton Chapman. We also have, um, this board has elected to put two ex-officio members on our Achievement Compact Committee. That's Jason Trombley from the Coalition of Communities of Color and Otto Shell from the PTA. Um, I would also say we've had students in the past, so Mina is a former Achievement Compact Advisory Committee member. Um, and just wanna say again, thank this board for opting to add those ex-officio members. They have added a really phenomenal perspective to our committee every year. I know that, um, we've tried to convince our surrounding districts and the state to allow that on the other Achievement Compact Committees. I don't know if anybody else has still opted to do that.
Amanda, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You're saying that the, the Achievement Compact, the makeup of the Achievement Compact is determined by the state, and so we can't add these ex-officios as regular members?
Correct.
Wow.
So, um, the, the staff to the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee is myself, Kathy Coing, Coning, who I'd like to thank for her big help on this, Sarah Singer, and Joseph Suggs from Research and Evaluation. So these are the multiple Achievement Compact targets that we do every year. So this is the list of them that I will not walk you through, um, recognizing that for each of these targets, we also disaggregate that data by race, ethnicity, um, free and reduced meal status, and special programs, special education, tag talented and gifted, and English as a Second Language. So a couple of things that we just wanted to provide some context for in the beginning. So, um, for the purposes of this report, um, we, our definition of historically underserved stands for, um, is for economically disadvantaged students, English language learners, students with disabilities, Black, Hispanic, American Indian native, um, Alaskan native, Pacific Islander students. So normally, when we research, when we as a district refer to historically underserved students, we're only, um, referring to those students of racial categories. But in this case, it also includes, um, economically disadvantaged English language learners and students with disabilities. And the reason for that, um, is that the state Achievement Compact refers to these students as disadvantaged students. As part of our Achievement Compact report three years ago, we started calling them historically underserved as a way to not use deficit language. Another clarification is that the state does not provide us disaggregated data for white students. So, um, as you know, in pre- previous years, what we've done is set our targets and our closing of the achievement gap based on the data of white students. The Achievement Compact does not disaggregate for white students. Okay, so in setting our, um, Achievement Compact targets, we have always set, um, for the last three years, ambitious goals in line with the state's goal of forty, forty, twenty. So forty stu- forty percent of all Oregonians having a bachelor's degree, forty percent having an associate's degree, and twenty percent, um, a high school diploma, GED, a certificate, and a modified diploma. We have consistently asked for the funding in order to meet those goals, and have set it in a way where we are trying to set ambitious goals that really reflect the urgency that this district has around all students achieving. Important to point out that for the two thousand thirteen, fifteen, um, the state legislature funding appropriation into the state's goal fund is only seventy-five percent of the amount required to fund the quality education model. So where we are, still have a gap in our funding.
Okay, so I'm gonna walk through some attendance-related data. Um, there's targets for sixth grade and ninth grade, and we met, um, all attendance-related targets for both historically underserved students and just all students in general.
So as I stated, in a number of situations, what the, the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee did was set very ambitious targets. So one of those was a hundred percent of students graduate in four years by twenty, twenty-five. That's in line with the state's forty, forty, twenty goal. What we've recognized is that even in places such as our four-year cohort graduation rate, where we've made gain- where we've made gains in the last years, we still have not met some of those targets, which are extremely ambitious. So here, our methodology to determine the annual, was to determine the annual constant growth rate necessary to reach that one hundred percent by 2025.
This depicts our graduation rates for various racial and ethnic groups. And what you'll see is that for Asian, Hispanic, historically underserved students, and all students, we have trended upwards in the past three years. But for our Alaskan Native and Native American population, our Pacific Islander population, and our Black students, we are stagnant. And just as a point of clarification, when it says ninth graders, 2009-10, for example, that's the cohort of the ninth, the ninth grade cohort in 2009-10. Four years later, they would have graduated in 12, 13. So in terms of how we performed against our target, what you'll see is we set, again, fairly ambitious targets. We were shy by two percentage points for historically underserved students and a small amount for all students.
So for our five-year completion rate target, this committee had recommended that a hundred percent of this year's 10th graders complete high school or the equivalent in five years. So that was a back map from a hundred percent five-year completion rate in 2017-18. And we set that three years ago, where we said that year's, that year's eighth graders, we wanted to be at a hundred percent five-year completion rate.
And here you can see our five-year completion rate for the past two years of data that we have, this data, we have data for.
So you're using a four-year graduation rate, but a five-year completion rate? So can you explain to folks what a completion rate is versus graduation?
Yeah, the four-year cohort graduation rate is kind of the typical thing that I think most people are used to hearing about. The five-year completion rate takes into account students who have completed within five years, and completing means they have either a regular diploma, or a modified diploma, or an extended diploma, or a GED. And just one point we wanted to note is that there is actually a large difference between our four-year cohort graduation rate and our fifth-year completion rate. And this is especially the case for some of our historically underserved student groups. So for example, for students with disabilities, we see a thirty-two percentage point difference between the four-year graduation rate and the five-year completion rate. We see a thirty percentage point difference between our American Indian, Alaska Native population as well. In terms of our five-year completion rate, we were shy, we're not able to meet our targets this year for either historically underserved students or all students.
So again, three years ago, this committee recommended to the board, and the board set a target of a hundred percent of that year's kindergarten students reading to learn by the end of third grade. So that's now this year's second graders. So this is a back map from a hundred percent in 2015-16.
And here's our data on students for third grade reading, whether they've met or exceeded the Oakes benchmark for the past three years. And we have trended downward in most, for most student groups. In comparison to the state, the state has also trended downward or remained relatively stagnant on third grade reading. PPS does continue to outperform the state overall. But we are also stagnant. And then this is data on our PPS historically underserved students. We don't have that data for the state at this point. And we failed to meet our third grade reading target that we set.
So ninth grade credits earned, this is a metric that has changed numerous times over the last three years. The definition, we are, it is currently that it is earning six credits, six or more high school credits by the time you're entering 10th grade. One of the changes this year was that the state asked for that data to be reported at the end of July. Many of our students are not done getting their summer school credits by the end of July. We had an extension into August. However, we also know that a number of credits are still also not entered in August. So what you can see here is the difference between the number that shows up on the Achievement Compact, which is the eighty-three point two percent versus what we were able to pull when we compared to how we've done it in the past, which is pulling those credits in mid-September, where we're at eighty-four point two percent. And then seventy-four point seven and seventy-five point six for our historically underserved students. And showing again, you know, the impact that our summer school and the options they have for students in terms of doing summer credit and credit recovery.
And this slide just depicts our target on ninth grade credits earned, and we are short on our target. We're using the data, the ninth grade credits data attained in mid-September for this picture.
So moving forward, this committee met last week and proposing targets, proposing targets to use the board in order to set for the Achievement Compact. Members of the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee unanimously recommend that the board decline to set targets for the three metrics that would employ the Smarter Balanced Assessment until we receive assurances that the assessment is reliable, valid, and free from cultural, linguistic, and socioeconomic bias. This is coming from the resolution that this board passed in July of 2014.
And can you explain to us what happens if we decline to fill those out?
No.
No what?
So quite honestly, I don't, we don't know. So there, I don't know if other school districts are thinking about that. We have not received a ton of guidance from ODE or OEIB regarding what sanctions are for not meeting targets or for declining to set targets. So as you can see, this would be, this would be the committee's recommendation of not setting targets around third grade reading proficiency, fifth grade math proficiency, eighth grade math proficiency. So these are the three targets that in previous years have used the Oregon's Assessment of Knowledge and Skills. That test is going, has gone away. This year, the, it is moving to the Smarter Balanced Assessment. We will not have baseline data in order to set those targets, nor do we know about the reliability and validity of that test.
Was there another, was there another, was there another section that had to do with the academic? There's third grade reading and two math. Was there another reading that's in there? When you go back to the beginning, was there another?
There's kindergarten readiness assessment. There's not another reading.
There's not another reading?
I will, the targets have, the targets over the last few years have switched a number of times, so they've.
Yeah, that's what I was, we had a list of the targets. I thought I saw one that was another.
It may have been sixth grade attendance.
No, there was eighth grade?
No.
So I have a question, which is, so we're not going to be doing the test that we all said is not worthy? But we have a goal of everybody reading by third grade, so how are we going to measure it?
So, so what the committee, so as this board knows, we are currently in the process of preparing a joint committee of teachers and central office administration, principals looking at our assessment practices within the district. So the recommendation from the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee is that that committee is tasked with identifying a measurement for around, ensuring that we are, our students are reading to learn. And so, and making that recommendation to the board. They're coming in November to you. So really looking at how you would assess achievement on third grade reading.
As well as fifth grade math and eighth grade.
Potentially, we were really, the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee focused on the third grade reading as we had set three, the three main goals, which were the ninth grade on track, the five-year completion, and the third grade reading. So those were the three main goals that the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee had identified.
Can I just, before we move on, let's, right now, the recommendation is not to set anything for third, fifth, and eighth. But without baseline data, let's just pretend that we wanted to set goals. How would we, how would we even go about setting goals without data? Or having experienced the test, or to even know what a cut score is? Or is there guidance or recommendations?
Well, at this point in time, no. So the crosswalk between Oakes and Smarter Balanced Assessment has not yet been built so that we understand how, how they may or may not connect. So we would be guessing.
So we'd pick something like forty percent? Knowing that history or what we understand about Smarter Balance is that more kids will not do well on this than previously. So we'd just pick a person? We just, is that, that's what they're recommending, is that we just pick something?
They want us to set a target.
Thank you.
Steve?
Kind of a little comment along with, yeah, picking something is probably a good way to go. If you take like, go look and see what happened in New York, and you dropped thirty percent on your numbers, and that becomes your targets. But the other problem that you face with the Common Core is those particular targets, third grade reading, there's no such thing in the Common Core as third grade reading, doesn't exist. They're never going to be able to take the Common, the S-Back test and equate it to a reading. It's not set up to do that. You don't have a reading test. You might be able to do the math, but there's no reading, Common Core reading thing. So we can't do it anyhow. Once we get a, we get a re, we get what they will call reading, which isn't going to really be a grade level. It's going to be how well you understand the Common Core. Then we could, if we were at twenty-one percent passed, we could say, okay, now we want twenty-four percent to pass next year. But it's never going to be a reading. So one of the things we need to look at, I think, in the district is exactly what you're talking about. I think there's a wonderful report, by the way, that you put together, that, that what, how are we going to measure if a kid's third grade reading? You can't do it with the S-Back test, they don't do it. So how are we going to do it? So are we going to do more testing?
Yep.
And add in?
Let's let them move on, okay? We're already, we're a little bit beyond, way beyond actually where we're supposed to be right now, so why don't you guys go ahead?
No, okay.
Well, can I? I would just like to respond that that is the function of the Balanced Assessment work team. So the work team that, that both district staff and union leadership are participating in, part of their task will be around that specifically.
So for the other targets, these here are the college and career readiness targets. The committee recommended employing the same methodology again, which you can see is the back mapping that we've done in the past. And employing the same targets again around kindergarten, assessment participation, sixth grade attendance, ninth grade attendance, and ninth grade credits earned.
So this is where Suzanne and I get to share with you the strategies that were discussed, identified by committee members to help us meet our targets. So we have a number, and Suzanne and I did not rehearse this in advance, so. So I'll go and you jump.
Okay.
Okay, great. So one of the things that we really spoke to as a committee was the need for hands-on experiential learning. We believe as a committee that project-based learning is actually something that has become missing as budgets have been tightened down over the course of time. We've seen less and less, fewer and fewer opportunities for our students to engage in hands-on learning, and we believe that there's a strong correlation between that and, and student results. So you'll see the hands-on learning list of suggested engagement activities for our kids. We also believe that dual-language immersion and access to second language acquisition for non-immersion students should be taking place across all grades and schools, and continuing to look at how do we engage in our dual-language immersion expansion so that we see bilingualism as a value held in PPS. Suzanne, you might want to speak so you can get it. So other things that we discussed were, we've seen promising results from AVID. AVID is a program that we have used primarily in our gear-up feeder schools. We have invested some dollars in expansion for AVID. The committee recommends that we continue along that bent. We also recognize the need for more culturally-specific supports for students and families around, within specific areas in education where we have not been doing a great job. I would say that that in particular was a strong point that we discussed around the early literacy goals that we have around third grade reading. We also discussed the need to invest, as this board has discussed as well, many of these things, in wraparound supports for all ages to ensure that our students are healthy and well-cared-for and feel supported by the schools in addition to, by their homes. And we talked about expanding arts programming, and this extended both to include arts teachers and also to look at partnerships where we've already embedded some professional development work with arts integration programs, such as with our partnership with Right Brain Initiative. We've seen some compelling data come from, from that program that we'll share with the board later. And really looking at time for movement and exploration for our students. So when is the time for them during a very crowded school day to actually get up, move around? And this does tie back again to the project-based learning. It also ties back to kids just having the space. To, one of the things we talked about this last week was in kindergarten, children used to have an opportunity to nap. So as we go to full-day kindergarten, and our little kids are pretty exhausted by the awesome learning experiences that they become engaged in, where is also their time for their brain to have a little bit of downtime and, or recess movement breaks as well. Thank you.
I guess, I'll, so I can get some applause. I attended two committee meetings, but I was really very impressed. There's, there's no shortage of really amazing people on the Achievement Compacts, both, you know, from the teacher's side and the district's side. And, and I don't think we're short on ideas for what can help our students achieve. I think what we came, you know, these are ambitious goals that we, everyone is committed to achieving. Most of these things don't come without a cost associated with them, and so that's where we are also looking to partner to get the funding we need. So we think that it would obviously help to have a certified librarian in every school and books available for the libraries. There's so many stories of students that can't actually bring home the books that they check out if they are so lucky to get to check out books. Lower class sizes, obviously in the primary grades will help with, with reading instruction. Also, you know, looking at blended classrooms that are unintentional, just, and how does that affect a student's ability? Parents and community outreach and engagement, and then, and then support for the teachers and administrators in the buildings. So we, the people teams are just, were talked about a lot. Staffing and support in the earlier grades so that it can move forward. So really kind of looking at what we're doing in those K-three grades. What are our class sizes? What are our supports for those students? So that we're getting that early intervention that we know is so meaningful. The wraparound services will help us with all our targets, with attendance, keeping students in school. That really involves people in-house that know the students, that are there on a regular basis, that can support. And with our special education students as well. And then talking about our professional development sometimes comes and goes based on funding and the importance for consistency with that, or if we invest a lot of money in a program, you know, do we have the long-term range to keep the professional development around it going? And to support that program for several years.
And then our question for you is, are these the right targets? So we'd be bringing this back to you for a vote.
this back to you for a vote next Tuesday, and it is due to the state by October fifteenth.
So my question for you is, these are all wonderful strategies, and all of them cost money. So I'm assuming that as we're doing our budget presentations, we're going to hear from you about each one of these strategies, and you're going to call us back to the Achievement Compact and why we are asking for this kind of money for each one of these strategies.
It may not be each single strategy, but there will, you will see that these are themes that have emerged around all three of the priorities in a number of our discussions that we've had around the budget.
Great. Thank you. Comments about the?
I would say the same about the, when the superintendent comes to us with some strategies or some investments with the.
All this money.
Yeah.
Comments about the targets? Any? Director Blau?
One, I'll start with a question about the, the strategies that were listed, as you pointed out, Suzanne. There's no shortage of ideas of what we'd like to invest in. And I'm curious what the process is for us to understand what the, the most strategic investment is, because even if the state does what we hope it does, which is continue its reinvestment in education, it's likely that we won't have enough funding to invest in all of these. And so how is the Achievement Compact, or how is this, the committee, or how is this list generated? Because I might catch some pushback on this, because these are all great things for kids. It also feels a little bit like me going on the street and asking parents like, hey, what else do you want in school? It, it doesn't feel as thoughtful or as strategic as I would maybe think, but maybe people on the street are that savvy in coming up with the right ones.
So, so this is a list of the strategies that have been identified by the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee over the last three years. So I just want to be clear that what we really wanted to demonstrate in listing them here is to.
Do you meet on the street?
So what we're, what we're trying to demonstrate here is that while we have, we have set really ambitious targets around this, what we're recognizing is that a number of the strategies, you know, we haven't been able to put into place a number of the strategies that we've been able to identify over the last three years because of funding. So in terms of our work for this year, we are not doing a strategic, you know, statement to you. What we're doing, what we are wanting to provide you with is a background of a number of the discussions that we've had over three years on this. And really, our work this year was really around what we were recommending for the fourteen, fifteen Compact. And we also engaged in a discussion with both Melissa around third grade reading budget and Antonio, Assistant Superintendent Antonio Lopez, around the high school graduation and completion budget, where the committee members provided feedback to the two of them regarding the budgets that they're developing and bringing back to you.
And I guess I, I can, I can speak for the teachers and I can make an assumption for the administrators that we would very much, I mean, we weren't tasked with ranking, you know, which is more important or which is more valuable. But I think that that kind of input or given finite money, I mean, like what can be done with integrity and done to the level that it needs to be done? And I, you know, would definitely say that we would enjoy participating in a process like that. I think we'd have some really valuable input, educators, on how to achieve your goals of third grade reading, given the limited resources. And I think you can see, you know, some things that we've done spot-on, given the resources we have, and other things like, you know, movement doesn't necessarily have a high price tag associated with it. And yet, we're seeing, you know, declining recess in many of our schools. So there's some stuff that we could just also be looking at, like brain research and brain development and just, you know, looking at stuff like that.
Can I ask another, sorry, follow-up?
Go ahead.
It's a question about the methodology, so this might be actually from Mr. Suggs. I thought in our packet that there was a slight change in methodology, that we had back-mapped originally, which meant different years had different growth targets as we mapped that. Then I thought in our materials that there was something about just kind of a flat ten percent step. Did I misread that?
So there's a both. So we did a slight change in the methodology of the back-mapping in that we agreed unanimously to accelerate the targets for the historically underserved students and those back maps. So the way we had done the methodology originally, Joe, you can come up and hit me at any point, was that it was sort of a slower gain over the first few years and then a faster gain at the end. What, in our discussion with the committee was we wanted to see a constant acceleration from the get-go. So that wound up changing that back-mapping a little bit. The ten percent one, so on ninth grade on track, we had originally, three years ago, done that to mirror our milestone data, their milestone goals. And if you remember back, when we did milestones, that was really looking at the five percent gain and the five percent, yeah. So one of the problems that we had was we incorrectly at one point put in data around a ten percent gain when it should have been a five percent. So that was one of the clarifications that was made.
Other comments? Dr. Jack?
So appreciate your work. I really appreciate your kind of pointing out in a polite way that there's this gap between what the state is actually providing in terms of its investments and what we know about the ways that we could be investing and actually moving these numbers toward the state's, state's goal. So obviously, in a number of areas, with the really crucial and dispiriting exception of third grade reading, we are gaining, but we're not gaining fast enough. And we're certainly, I mean, the governor's goals are very high, and I'm not seeing the accompanying commitment to, while there has been some turnaround investment, I'm not seeing the accompanying commitment to a very high and ambitious level of investment in the types of programs and strategies you identify. So, so I just, I just struggle with being incredibly depressed by this, but also just being re-energized by that we're, regardless of this form, that, I don't know if it's just me, but I have a really hard time with the state's, understanding the state's form and making much sense of it. So I appreciate that you have provided it to us in an understandable manner, so thank you for that. It's just, I'm struggling between, you know, are these the right targets? Well, we're doing our very best to try to reach, you've back-mapped them, we're trying to reach these very high targets without the quality and education model that would arguably give us the best shot at reaching them. So, and I want us to be as ambitious and work as hard as we can to reach all those goals. But that's just, that's just part of my struggle. But I also appreciate, Suzanne, your point that it isn't always about investment, that we, what can we be doing as a district to be more mindful about the different choices we make? And I feel like we're moving in that direction, but we have a lot more to do. But just having you all be working together and thinking about this and making it visible gives me hope. So I appreciate that.
I guess I just want to thank you for the leadership with the resolution and realizing that, you know, it's, without knowing anything about the S-Back test, we don't want anything to be punitive for our district, for our teachers, for our students. And so I, I think that, I guess I'm really grateful to have that kind of leadership. And I think it, you know, is felt by everyone on the Achievement Compact Committee that not knowing what happens if we meet or don't meet these goals, we didn't want to, to write those in and go against the resolution.
I really appreciate your leadership, Dr. Jack. And I think, to me personally, you know, I want to keep this, what your work, visible. We have to submit this, this form to the state, but I want to keep what you're doing is the, and the other work groups around the district and all the efforts that are going on. So the work that, that you're doing to try to say what is a meaningful measure of having, making sure that our third graders are able to read. And, and that's, that's to me is where I'm interested in hearing, and having you guys continue to weigh in and, and hearing from our teachers and our, and our staff. So I'm excited about that part.
So I know this is, in many ways, a game of inches and incremental gains, and I think we can celebrate those incremental gains. I can't help but think, though, that, that we're not reaching as far as we could. I'm disappointed that our targets aren't higher. And a part of my disappointment, I think even more importantly than the target, is that I'm not entirely convinced that collectively, we all agree that every child in our schools can achieve. So until we can collectively get to that place, I'm not sure we're, we're going to ever reach, reach those audacious goals that, that we should have. On the, you know, the, the third grade reading proficiency in fifth grade and eighth grade proficiency and not having any goals because not having a, not having a baseline, I mean, each of those should be at a hundred. Every kid moving out of that third grade, out of that fifth grade, out of that eighth grade, needs to be reading at benchmark. And, and if we look at it that way, it might be a little freeing for us, that every one of those kids in those classrooms can achieve at that level. And that's audacious, I think. Can we get there? I don't know. But if we, if we have that mindset, can we get there, get higher than we were last year, than our actual was last year? Maybe. So I'm more inclined, although, again, logic tells me this is a, like I said, a game of inches, I'm more inclined to want to be audacious about this. And fail being audacious than fail being minimalist in saying that this is, let's do an incremental gain, or what we think we can achieve. Because, I mean, I was about to say, what we think we can achieve, you, yeah, sure, you can achieve that, but it's not where you need to be. But obviously, what we think we can achieve hasn't been achievable yet. So, so yeah, that's, that's my feeling. And I'm looking this direction, but I'm also looking this direction too. And I know this isn't, this isn't easy information to present to this evening. So I thank you for, for bringing, bringing it forward.
Any others? Director Regan?
Yeah, I would share Director Martin's concern about the incrementalism. And it would be curious to submit this back to the state and say a hundred percent on every goal and just see what kind of reaction that gives us too. But it is what we should be heading toward. I have three questions. One is on hands-on learning strategy. Did the committee members talk about outdoor school at all? Or could you?
Not this year. We did not specifically speak to outdoor school.
Could you please talk about outdoor school? Because we've reduced it from five days to three days. And to me, if you want to talk about hands-on experiential learning, there's really nothing better than that for that week. And, and what it does for, for kids, you know, during the sixth grade, but also for the high school kids who are the counselors and the leadership skills and our teachers of tomorrow in many cases. I just think there's huge opportunities there for us to be thinking about that. So I'd love to have the committee at least talk about it. The, one question I had for David Williams in the back, our government relations person, is in terms of these ex officio members, are we thinking about trying to drop some legislation or something that would say that Achievement Compact Advisory Committee membership should be expanded to include, or should, there should be some flexibility to expand membership on a district-by-district level?
Yeah, thank you, Director Regan. That's an excellent question. I noted it when you asked it before. The legislation has been brought previously by the Oregon School Boards Association and the Oregon PTA in a previous session to add other members as voting members of the committee. It has not survived the legislative process, which also included some veto threats from the governor as well about changing the makeup of that, along with, as you know, they've brought bills to change the makeup of the OEIB as well. So it has faced an uphill challenge, and we supported it when they brought it before and certainly would support it again.
Wow. It just blows my mind.
Because the other one was not having a school board member on the OEIB, right?
And a parent, a parent representative. But, you know, in the Achievement Compacts, I mean, what, what is the thinking or the harm in having one or two folks identified by each individual district? I'm asking the wrong person.
Certainly, we see no harm because we support the bill, so.
I, I know, I just don't, I don't get it. Okay. And then the final question is, Carol, thank you, David. You have set a goal that a hundred percent of third graders in Portland School would be reading at grade level within two years. And so, again, getting back to our, you know, discussion, how are you measuring a hundred percent? If, I mean, I'm presuming you're not going to be using the sort of balanced assessment either. So how are you doing it?
No, but that's why we're asking the assessment committee to figure out what's our local measure of how are we doing it. And I think the, being consistent with the resolution that we submitted to the state about how we want to approach the smarter balance and how we utilize smarter balance and how the state utilizes smarter balance feels consistent with what this particular document is in our thing. And I think we're figuring out a local measure for us for third grade, to do third grade reading, which we're still holding a hundred percent as our goal. So that's the goal we've claimed. Director Morton, we claimed a hundred percent.
No, and I get the hundred percent, but by what measure?
That's what the assessment committee is going to do. And that's the work we've asked them to. When we said it, we were still using OAKS. So now that we won't have OAKS, it's to that committee.
Right. So in the time period since we set that goal, we have moved from OAKS to Smarter Balanced Assessment, and this board has adopted a policy around the Smarter Balanced Assessment. So, or not a policy, just, thank you, resolution for the right word. So with those two changing factors and our understanding of just best practice and assessment and wanting to add multiple indicators around students' ability to, students' abilities period within any given subject area, it's one of the tasks of the assessment work team to look particularly at third grade reading, to establish what will we be using as our indicator of a hundred percent.
And I, I guess I just, I mean, to clarify, I don't think, I mean, I want to definitely speak for everyone on the committee that no one didn't think that students are capable, that a hundred percent of our students are capable. And it was no way to undermine Superintendent Smith's and our district's priority around third grade reading. It was more to support the resolution in a compact with the state versus what we want to achieve.
Right.
And then for the outdoor school, we, though we didn't talk specifically about that, I think what we were, and then maybe this would be a way to be strategic with the money too, is to look at where there's overlap. But there's programs like that that not only help with academics and learning, but also help with the social-emotional piece that we know is so important. So then helping with our retention and absenteeism, right? So, you know, we're supportive of any programs like that. And we all, I mean, I don't think there was anyone around the table that didn't have a story of what kept them in school, and it was like drama or CTE, you know? Wasn't the math class, even though I love it?
That's great. Thanks. Okay. Any other comments about the targets?
Director Blau?
So I guess one thing that, as I try to figure out these targets, the, the challenge I always have with especially academic outcomes, right, is that you get them about a year and a half after you actually did the work. There's nothing to see how we're progressing. Is there any discussion? Because those third grade targets are not what we were hoping for. And I don't want to come back next year and say, whoops, again, like, are there, I don't know if it's process check-ins or if it's, if we're developing a local assessment, like, how are we getting this data more real-time so that we can, it's almost like an early warning system for this target?
Right. So currently, as a district, specific to early literacy, we use DIBELS as a common measure across all of, all of our early grade levels, K through three. DIBELS is an assessment that can be used three times a year in addition to progress monitoring students. And what it doesn't do for you is diagnose the actual reading difficulties that a student's having, but it does give you an indicator of whether a student is at some risk or at very high risk of not being on track for their literacy gains. We currently use that consistently across the district. We are building in a data wall that allows us to be paying attention to that data in a different, little different way. Schools have had paper, pencil, card data walls that they use at their individual sites. It's a less dynamic process for them. So what we want is for teachers to be able to enter, here are the interventions that we're doing with this group of kids, and here's the change that we're seeing as a result, and be able to share that with each other, share those promising practices. and be able to share that with each other, share those, uh, promising practices. So the other shift that's happened this year is tighter conversations with the senior directors and the principals around how are you looking at your data as far as, uh, specific to early literacy around the DIBELS data? And then what are those questions you're asking that are follow-up questions? So you're getting more into the, um, deeper and truer conversation around student literacy gains. So not just holding it to what percentage of students are at benchmark as indicated by DIBELS, what percent aren't, but the greater conversation of if you have a number of students who are showing as at risk using this assessment, what are those things that you're doing in your classroom where you're seeing the greatest gains? Uh, what are those things that you are doing differently as a result of looking at this data? What other, what other indicators are you looking at around early literacy for your students and how might we be able to use those as a school and as a system? That's much tighter this year than it has been in years past and we've just begun. So that first assessment just completed in September.
And is there any way for, I'm sorry, did you?
I was just gonna say, and Melissa did a little bit of a preview of some of the discussions that we've been having with our partners around the, the budget development is really like, what are we doing in order to support some of that progress monitoring and around data collection and making that more available and accessible for schools?
And I guess I, I'd be curious if there's interest in our, um, our, our seeing that data. It sounds like we're doing things more, more tightly at the site-based level, but I, I guess I just, I do not want to be back here in another year and say, whoops, well, we're going to try a little bit this and we're going to be a little bit tighter on that. I mean, that, that is just going the wrong way. And I just, um, it's just going the wrong way and we need to reverse it. Um, the second, um, comment is, or I've lost track what comment it is actually, um, is the, uh, achievement compact talked a little bit about expanding dual language for immersion, emerging bilinguals, that's fantastic. And I'm still not sure that, like, that's a pretty intensive and it usually starts when students are young. I'm, I'm not sure that we still have a good onboarding, on-ramping, um, for students that are in ESL that came to us at a different time and that's not an effective strategy. So I guess I just hope that we can, um, find a strategy. I, I don't think we have a good articulation yet of, of how we best do that. Um, and my other concern, and this is related to what I was saying about, like, this is, this is a good list and I, I hear this list of what we can do and what could be investments. But my concern is, is that if we always, if we'd only go back to doing what we've always done, we're going to get the same results and the same results are not good enough. Um, and so we have to come up with the strategies that are most effective. We can't just go back and fill in what we've always done, so.
Others? Director Buell?
This whole conversation is really difficult for me because one of the things that, if you want children to read at grade level, then you have to teach them to read at grade level. I mean, you have to teach them to read and that takes, that's a large thing. It's not like you go out and say, okay, we're going to do this, we're in the classroom, we're going to make the teacher a better teacher. That's not exact, that didn't work, sorry. I mean, how are we doing? We went down pretty much, right? A lot of our things, how are we doing? How are we following the, the whole reform movement idea of the testing and the data and everything? How are we doing? Not particularly very good. How are they doing in Oregon? Not particularly very good. How's everybody doing? Not particularly very good. What you have to do is identify those kids who can't read and teach them to read. And that's not a strategy that you can necessarily do in one classroom. I disagree in a, in a little bit with what Matt said. He said a hundred percent of the kids can learn. He, that's correct, but are we set up to teach a hundred percent of them to get to grade level? Are we out here in other types of things? Do we, are we doing the things that will get those kids to read? And, and to some degree, we're restricted from doing some of them and some of them we should be doing. We do, the fact that we don't have librarians, certificated librarians in all our elementary schools, that's how you get children interested in books. And if they get interested in books, guess what? They will often read. That's, everybody who's ever taught school knows that. I mean, this is, and, and that's shown over and over and over by the research. And if a kid's a couple of grade levels behind, guess what? You gotta get that kid some extra help. And if a kid's dyslexic and that's the problem, guess what? You gotta get that kid some extra help. This idea that you can, that the teachers themselves can be improved to where they can get the larger percentage of their kids to read at grade level, that's just poppycock, really. It, it's not how you do it. How you do it is you go in there and you teach those kids to read and you focus on that. And, and I'm not even criticizing what we're doing. We're doing what we think that we should be doing, but we have the wrong push at it. That's why I complain about the milestones themselves. They mess us up. What we should be looking at as our objective is can every child read? I know teachers who, at the end of the year, every kid in their class can read at grade level regardless of the situation because they did what it took to get them there. And if you have thirty kids and a lot of them are difficult children in terms of teaching, yes, they can learn, but can we teach them all? That's the question, not whether, whether our teachers believe they can learn. I've never seen one teacher in my entire life that did not believe that each of their children could learn. I mean, where is that coming from? That's craziness. That's crazy talk in a way. What it is, is can we teach them? And it's not incremental with teaching them, it's getting in and figuring out who can and can't read and teaching them and putting the time and the energy in and giving the teachers the support to do that. That's totally different in a way that what, that, than what we've done and what we're talking about. I love the idea of what they're doing here with this committee because they're saying, here, here, begin to look at it like this, but it's not enough because we still have to identify this kid can't read. So what do we do, do we do in this cla, in this classroom, in this school to get this kid to read? It's not generalized and we're going to look at the thing. That's not, that didn't, it's not going to help us really doing what we need to do.
Okay. Well, thank you, because that's exactly what I thought we were talking about. So I totally agree with you, Director Buell. Um, any other, anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation and for all your explanations and look forward to hearing from you all again. Okay, on to coordinated early intervening services. To know, Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would. So this is going to be a report on our coordinated early intervening services plan and Melissa Goff, our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and Mary Pearson, our Director of Special Education, will present the plan.
So we're going to just take a brief moment and make sure that we get the correct PowerPoint.
Uh-oh. Quick break? You doing a quick break? Oh. Are you?
I did.
Do something for the TV camera. Do something for the TV camera.
I'll just, I'm afraid to do that. Taking a break?
No. Just waiting for them.
You can take a break if you want. You guys want to go ahead?
Hi there. Uh, my name is Melissa Goff. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
And I'm Mary Pearson, Senior Director of Special Education.
And tonight, Mary and I are looking forward to sharing with you our coordinated early intervening services plan that we submitted last week to the Oregon Department of Education, uh, addressing our, uh, finding insignificant disproportionality in exclusionary disciplinary practices for over ten days, uh, within our special education student population. We, uh, will be sharing more information with you, uh, when special education presents to you, I believe in-
November.
November. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that we got this in front of you tonight so, to make sure that you had the same information that we have, uh, in this work.
And before I get started, I want to just, um, um, add to what Melissa said about, uh, we will be coming to present a larger plan to you in November, which is kind of a special education redesign. This is a small part of a much larger plan, so. Um, so what is coordinated early intervening services? Um, the Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDEA, allows for school districts to use fifteen percent of their IDEA funds for tier two and tier three interventions for general education students. So districts always have that option to do that. In cases when there's significant disproportionality, districts are required to use fifteen percent of their IDEA funds for tier two and tier three interventions for spec, uh, for general education students. Um, just, there are four areas where districts can receive significant disproportionality. Just for your information, one is around discipline, date, uh, significant disproportionality in discipline. One is around significant, um, disproportionality for just identification for special education. And then one is for identification within particular eligibility categories. And then the fourth is, um, uh, overrepresentation in one particular setting, like for, at a rev, uh, really, uh, restrictive setting. So just, I'm sure you've seen this before, but just to familiarize you again with multi-tiered systems of support, we're really talking about tier two and tier three interventions that are specialized, tier two being specialized for groups. You know, the tier one is the, the supports that all students get. Tier two is really looking at that, um, smaller groups and targeted, um, interventions. And then tier three is obviously individualized, very individualized supports. So the requirements of this funding is that we, um, fifteen percent of our IDE budget would, which would be about 1.5 million dollars of IDEA over the two years, which 2014, 15 and 1516 are allocated to tier two and three interv, uh, behavior supports in this case for general education students. We're required to submit a plan with a budget to, um, ODE that outline what the expenditures are and how they will be allocated over the two years. Um, we're, we're required to target our focus around prevention strategies and in this case, um, we will be especially targeting black students in our interventions. And then, um, we follow the annual reporting requirements. Um, I, I think it's important to go back and look at our data. Um, we have made progress over the years. Um, what you see here in the first graph is non-special education students. So from 2009 to 2013, which are the two years where we received significant disproportionality, our overall, um, discipline for non-sped students went from, uh, 227 to 110, from sped students from 101 to 38, and then for our black students from 44, um, to 19, and then white students from 44 to 13. So, and again, I need to, these are specifically students who have been removed, um, either suspended or expelled from school for more than 10 days in a school year. So given this improvement, why are we, um, sitting here talking about, um, this, our early intervening services? Um, in 2012, 13, there were nineteen students that experienced exclusionary practices of more than 10 days in a school year, um, over thirteen schools. And that, um, although our exclusionary rates have significantly decreased since 2009, our rates for white students have decreased at a higher pace than our students of color, in this case, our African-American students. So our early, um, intervening funds, um, what we're focusing on is prevention. I loved what the, the counselor said when she was up here earlier. Um, I couldn't agree more, um, that, um, we, we believe that, um, that our school psychologists, like school counselors, are a resource in the building that is at, is, is at the building level and is, um, can have, uh, tremendous leverage around this work. Um, so we're asking that formally fifteen percent of our school psychs spend their time on prevention. Um, this is aligned with their national, um, organization, the National Association of School Psychologists. Um, and they're, the National Association of School Psycholists, sorry, psychologists, um, service delivery model really focuses on prevention. Um, it focuses on system-wide, um, uh, sort of in, putting systems in place that permeate all aspects of the service delivery model. So looking at really data-driven decision-making, accountability, co, um, you know, collaboration and consulting. Um, it also looks at services at the student level, so really, um, targeting individual student supports as well as looking system-wide at the building.
Mary?
Yes?
What percentage of our schools have a full-time psychologist on staff?
Oh, I don't have that data off the top of my head. High schools do. All, um-
All of them have a full-time?
I believe all of our high schools do. Um, some of them have more than a 1.0, but no, not in our KA buildings. Um, it, it's ranged, it's on a staffing formula. So I can get that information to you though.
But all of our schools have access to a psychologist at least part-time?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so why school psychologists? Um, because they are a school-based resource that, um, has the professional capacity and the knowledge to, to drive some of this work. And like I said, it's in alignment with the National Association of School Psychologists, um, ten domains of practice. So what we have done over the last year is we have a, an advisory group of school psychologists that we meet with on a monthly basis. We started this conversation last year. So even though well before we knew about this significant disproportionality, we were already moving in this direction because this is really what their national organization recommends and we believe it's best practice. So, uh, the work that we are doing with our advisory council is, um, looking at their job at, at a more deeper level. So obviously if we're going to ask them to spend fifteen percent of their time on prevention, we need to take other things off of their plate. So we're looking at how we can streamline some other portions of their position and the things that they do. Um, and so, and I think I had sent you, we've sent out a, a survey to them. They're, um, asked, actually looking at how many school psychs are already doing this because many are, because again, it's, if you've graduated in the last 10 years, this is sort of the training that you've gotten, so. Um, and then- And then, of course, this is just part of a much larger plan that is part of the superintendent's priorities. But some of the things that we have decided as a group that we will focus on as far as professional development for our school psychologists is around culturally responsive PBIS, restorative practices, really making sure that all of our school psychs are leaders in their building around functional behavior assessment. And then we're looking to have them all trained in what's called team-initiated problem solving, which is sort of a research-based way of looking at data and running effective meetings that is really research-based on using data to make decision-making. And that's it, so questions?
Questions from board members? Yes. Director Buell?
You're going to come back with another plan, when was that?
So in November, I believe I'm on the, one of your agendas to come back around sort of a sped redesign.
Is that going to be a broader plan?
Yeah, this is, that would be much more of a department, a whole department redesign.
And is that going through the committee? Is the committee working on that, the one on the Discipline Disparity Committee?
Um, no. No, I don't think so.
So the Discipline Disparity Committee isn't working on the plan?
No, this is, this is a much larger plan around special education redesign on our service delivery model, not just around discipline, our whole service delivery model. Yeah.
So were all of the, was all this stuff, the 1.6 million that we have to deal with, did that deal with general education African-American students also?
I believe so, yes.
So, but we don't, do we have a plan for coming back in November to deal with that?
Oh, I mean, I'm on that committee, but-
You're on, you're the special ed part, so Melissa, is she the, I mean, we have a committee, right?
Our next board meeting, we're coming with the budgets on the three priorities, so that will be at your next board meeting. And one of those is the disproportionate discipline, district, the district-wide plan. What they're speaking up tonight is specifically the finding around special education disproportionality.
Will the plan next, next week also include non-funding parts? In other words, suppose we decided that the plan was, we wanna, we want to have our principals on our teachers get along better because that would allow them to talk in a better way within setting up the disciplinary structure of their school, their behavioral things. It's a critical thing, for instance, around PBIS. It's a critical thing around restorative justice, to have those people get along. So, but that didn't cost any money. We tell them this term, we train our principals on how to get along. So, I mean, is that part of the, I mean, how broad are we going here on this plan?
So I, I hope I'm understanding your question.
I'm not sure I do. So if you do, let me know.
So that, so that you know. So Senior Director Pearson and I have been meeting with, with Chief Equity Officer Lenzopoe, and today we met again with Janine Facuta from the Office of Equity to go over these examples of professional development priorities that are embedded, yes, in the office and teaching and learning side of the work, and also embedded within the work that will be brought to you next week. So you will see, for these same components, you will see within the proposal that comes to you next week as well.
Well, okay, I guess that, my question is broader than the equity issue. It's around, it's discipline disparity. And so we need a plan which creates alternatives?
I'm sorry, forgive me.
And those types of things. See, when I, we have an alternative plan, we have a plan how we, we need to relook at how we're doing our discipline structure within the school district. We need to look at how we're doing in each school. We need to get those people getting together. In order, I'm talking about an overall way where we actually approach the whole problem, not the singular problem, kinda?
Absolutely.
Which is the numbers, exactly. We can just quit spending it and that takes care of the numbers.
Yeah, so I apologize. I didn't make it clear that, so Chief Equity Officer Lenzopoe is actually overseeing our disciplinary goals, the priority that the superintendent has spent, has placed around exclusionary practices, particularly disproportionality in student discipline. So it will encompass not only equity components, but it will encompass the larger strategic components that we're talking about district-wide in regards to exclusionary disciplinary practices.
And that's coming from, the strategic component is coming from the same three people here? Or is that coming from?
And actually, so I think some of what you're speaking to, we've set as a larger, are part of our larger goals and actually even part of the work plan in terms of how are we working more collaboratively with our, our teachers, how are, with the climate surveys, of how are we looking at the climate in our schools, the successful schools. So a number of things, you're talking about the overarching things are present in our more global work plan. And what you're gonna see in these individual budgets are much more strategy-specific to that. But what, you're talking about more globally, how are we getting along with each other? How are we working more collaboratively? How are we impacting the culture of our schools?
All the things that go together with this. Is that going to be presented sometime to the board? That's my question. I think that doesn't sound like it's going to be in the special ed material that's brought to us. And it, and it doesn't sound to me like it's going to be in the money. And it doesn't sound to me like it's built around the three things. So is it, is it going to be presented to us someplace?
So some of this, we talked about in our work with you guys this summer. And like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna like bump this to when you were talking about your work plan, which'll be the next thing, 'cause a number of the items you're addressing fit there and let you, and connect to every one of the other strategies. 'Cause we had a goal about how are we working more collaboratively with our union, and we've got a whole work plan under that. We've done some stuff about the climate survey, which will be applied to every individual school, and we've got a work plan around that. So numbers of the things you talked about as part of your work session this summer are in motion and will impact the work of these individual strategy teams. But they're not gonna necessarily be called out in each one of the strategies, so.
So the answer is kind of-
So I can see in our work plan that discipline, excuse me, just a minute.
Maybe in a work plan down the line someplace?
Discipline data is in December, January, and June work sessions. So you'll see.
Discipline data, but is that the discipline plan?
How to reduce out-of-school discipline.
And that budget's coming to your next board meeting.
By December, we'll have a plan from you that's broader and will be, okay, great, thank you.
And all of this work is aligning-
Right now, let's just stick to this particular plan. And this topic, we're getting a little broad, and I think that it's hard to answer all those questions when we don't really know what's happening in December right now. So let's just stick with this.
And I think that it's important to note that this will nest in a much larger plan that is in total alignment.
Right, and just this piece came up because there were questions about what is the directive? What's the sanction? What does that mean? And it is when, so this is just informational so that every, that we in the public understand what that was about. But obviously, it's part of a much larger endeavor.
Exactly.
Bobby?
So in terms of the Coordinated Early Intervening Services Plan, it looks like there's a district-wide component, and then it looks like there's a targeted plan. And the target plan says the 12 targeted schools will be included in our district-wide plan and will receive a high level of follow-up coaching and support. What are the 12 targeted schools that you're referring to?
And those are the targeted schools that is part of the larger plan with the district and out of the Office of Equity. And I don't know that those, I mean, I think we have a draft plan of the targeted schools, but we don't have a final plan. Is that correct?
Okay, so I was just trying to understand if that was related to the 13 schools where we had Black boys expelled, or?
But some of them might overlap.
Part of the conundrum with a finding like this is the seeming misalignment between the finding and how you're directed to then use the dollars. So the finding is specific to within special education. We are able to look specifically at that disproportionality data, which we have an issue with disproportionality across our system. We're very well aware of our need to address that. And when you speak to the 13 schools at which the 19 students were suspended or expelled for over 10 days, the dollars by design of the finding are to be spent across the district in general education targeted activities. So it isn't, the dollars don't go specifically to special education practices, nor do they go specifically to individual schools.
So when we talk about a targeted plan and we say the 12 targeted schools, where's that coming from? I'm sorry.
And that's, that's, again, that's a part of the larger district plan, and they're still trying to define what targets they're going to use to identify those schools.
So we've just come up with 12 schools that we're gonna target resources to? I mean, why, why not 10, why not 14? I'm just trying to understand when it says the 12 targeted schools, where is that coming from?
And I don't, I don't, I mean, the criteria was based on high level, high number of, not necessarily exclusionary practices, but-
So this is what's coming to you next week as a part of the Discipline Disparities Plan?
Okay, okay. And then my other question was, in terms of the reasons that these students, and not just the 19 Black students, but, you know, are out of school suspensions, the reasons that they're out of school, is that going to come to us in more detail, whether it was, you know, insubordination, drugs, gun safety, whatever it was?
Yes, I have that data, I can get it to you.
Okay, I'd appreciate saying that.
Yep, by school.
Yes, and by school.
Yeah, because I appreciate we would, I would assume that we're gonna take very different approaches depending on what the infraction was. I mean, in some cases, you don't want that child in school. If it's a severe enough infraction, but there's obviously completely different professional development and other things that come into play depending on what the infraction is, right?
Right, so the intention of these dollars really is to look at that yellow band. So where can we be preventative, not across every single student, but students who we start to see maybe exhibiting behaviors that are just atypical within a classroom setting and not, not addressed by one teacher the same way as it's addressed by another teacher? So what are those things that we can do differently in order to engage with students through an asset-based approach? And prevent things escalating to the point where you would say, well, of course, there are some things we would be expelling the student for, right? So the intention of these dollars is to invest prior to us getting to a point where a student's behavior would be such that we would be concerned about it.
Director Buell?
I've had several constituents ask me about the 1.6 million. Now, the 1.6 million, which is now, what percentage of the 1.6 million was spent on the activities that we're going to be spending them on now, under the new plan, under, before we were given the penalty of those, having to spend the 1.6 million? What percentage of the 1.6 million was spent on what we're going to spend it on to begin with?
I would have to work with the budget office to get the exact amount because some staff are already on those funds, on IDEA funds, and it's, so it, it's, depends, but.
My question, of course, is built around, do we now need to go back into the special ed department and backfill?
No, we, we have the money in our IDEA in reserves that we will use for this.
We're gonna use reserves there, okay, thank you.
Well, I-
That's not, that's not quite accurate. District reserves, it's IDEA reserves, correct.
Yeah, it's IDEA reserves, right, so I wanted to make sure that that was put out. And also, a lot of the work that Senior Director Pearson has done with her team has been very proactive around this. So when we received the finding, we were not surprised by this finding, and I don't think anybody in this room would have been surprised by this finding. This is from data from 2012, 13. We've discussed this data multiple times. We know we aren't meeting our obligations to our students around this work. So when the special education budget was built this year, which includes both looking at how they spend their general fund, but also how do they invest their IDEA funds, Mary and her team really built around how can we proactively build in to the, to the optional 15% to spend that IDEA funding differently. So we had already built that. The difference, and it's back on one of the earlier slides, which you don't have anyway, the difference really is not only the designation of the dollars, but it's the reporting. So Mary and her team had already planned, had already been working with school psychs around how do we do our work more in alignment with, with what your national organization is saying we need to do? How do we have your input into doing that? How do we increase FTE? So we increased the school psych FTE by five FTE already prior to this occurring, with the intentionality of having this approach be the approach that we moved to. So in that planning, Mary and her team were able to specifically try to address some of these issues. One of the differences is we have to report, we have to code every expenditure as a part of this finding now, under CEIS, whereas we would not have needed to actually code those dollars in that way prior to the, prior to the finding.
So did the money drop? I mean, did the numbers drop from, if this is 2010, 11? No, it was 2011, 12?
This is 2012, 13 data, so it-
That they're using?
Correct.
So it was just this last year?
Two years ago.
So, well, then, then last year's data, did the numbers drop since we'd already begun to move in that direction? Did the numbers go down?
And we don't, we don't have the official numbers from the state. They're always almost two years behind.
Well, but don't we send them the numbers?
Yes.
If we looked at the numbers that we sent, did the numbers go down since we're already moving?
I believe the numbers, I believe it's pretty much stayed steady.
So what we did, the new stuff didn't go down, so what we're being asked to do?
Well, this budget build was just for this 14, 15 school year. So the budget build I was referencing with you was the work Mary and her team did last January through June.
Thank you, that was-
This year, sorry.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Director Blalow?
One, I just appreciate us continuing to have this conversation about disproportionality. As you said, it's not surprising, it's unacceptable, but it's not surprising. And we've known it's an issue. And I guess I just wanted to comment that I've heard some community members say, well, why, why is this still an issue? And I wanna note the aggressive action that you all have taken. And again, it's still not acceptable where we're at. But I just wanna make sure that when we say that tomorrow or next year, whenever we get rid of disproportionate discipline, it's really about taking the correct action to try to figure out how to keep as many kids in school as we possibly can because we know when they're not with us, they're not learning what we were hoping to give them. And so I just, I just wanna highlight, 'cause I think these, as disappointing as the third grade reading and the academic numbers were before, I find it very hopeful that we had a 51% improvement in the number of exclusionary discipline, down to 110 across the district, that students with disabilities saw 62.4% improvement, down to 38 students, and a reduction in exclusionary discipline with Black students, that it's down 56.8%. It's still over the threshold of disproportionality, which isn't okay. And that is significant movement. And I don't want us to be so afraid or so worried about public input or feedback that we don't continue to tackle this head-on. And that's what I hear you guys saying, so I appreciate that. And I look forward to hearing what the plan is, both for the district and within special ed, 'cause I know special ed has been working on this for about a year, a year and a half, as part of the courageous conversations in how do we stop over-identification and all of that. So thank you.
Thank you, I look forward to sharing more with you.
Others? What he said? Me too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Okay. Now we'll move on to the business agenda, business agenda, excuse me. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
There is not.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda? Director Morton?
I'd like to request that we pull out the resolution recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and talk about that separately.
It's not in the business agenda.
I don't think it's in there.
It's in there. I'd like to make a motion before or after the business agenda to suspend our rules, to possibly consider something in addition to a resolution.
I wanted to pull Resolution 4965.
Okay, so Director Morton, I think Director Curler brought up beginning, it is not actually in the business agenda. So we'll wait, and either you or Director Blalow can bring that up when we finish the business agenda. And then Director Regan would like to pull 4965. Is there a second for that? Is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Representative?
Aye.
Okay.
That was the protocols?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, why don't we go ahead and do 4965 first? So, comments?
We have an amended version. Where are we?
There it is.
It was based on your input, so...
So, I was bringing forward amendment. Do we need to have a, a motion to consider it first before I bring forward the amendment, or do I just bring the amendment?
I think we already have, well, we had a motion to pull, so I think first you have to go ahead and tell us what your amendment would be, and then we'll...
Okay. So, in Resolution Number 4965, which is adopting board member expectations and operating protocols, there's no reference in here to another employee of ours who is the district performance auditor. The position is currently not filled, but it is one of our responsibilities, and so I wanted to include language in here, similar to the, you know, language related to the superintendent on what our kind of roles and responsibilities and operating protocols are around the performance auditor. So, in the first, on the page that says board member expectations and operating protocols, I was suggesting that we add a, a new five that says hire, set goals for, and evaluate the board performance auditor. And then later on, where we talked about priority setting and evaluation, I would add a D. So, this would be under superintendent evaluation, a C. D would be board performance auditor, would say the board will establish a process for determining which annual performance audits will be implemented, and will ensure that the board performance auditor is provided with the access and support to accomplish the audit. Mostly, I just want to reference the fact that we have another employee and another function that wasn't mentioned in here in any capacity. So, that is my amendment.
So, I caught...
We've got a...
We have a paper copy of it.
Oh, I don't have it. I mean, I don't have it.
It was in some of the materials that were on her desk, it took me a minute to find it.
Yeah, there were a lot.
So, this is, this is why it's important to get all this stuff done before we have a board meeting, and not to have a stack of papers in front of us at board meetings, so... Okay, so, I think that's a motion, Bobby?
Yes.
Okay. So, Director Regan moves a change to the operating protocols, adding the section five around hiring, setting goals for and evaluating the performance auditor, and to the priorities under one D, A, hold up, one, yeah, one D. Again, establishing a process for determining annual performance audits and ensuring that the board performance auditor is provided with access to support and accomplish. Actually, okay, so, that's the motion. That's the second. So, my one, so I'll start, comments, because I believe that there is already a process set under the, our current policies about how to determine which audits will be implemented with your...
I possess a policy around a variety of things that are in here. I just want to make sure that we have it in here, that that's one of our responsibilities.
And we have a committee that's been established to do this very thing, and...
That's what I'm saying, it's already, it's already really there, but...
Yeah, so...
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the amendments as stated, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? And I saw student representative as also an aye? Okay. Others? Director Buell?
Can I talk to you? I can talk to the whole motion now.
The motion, that motion has already been approved.
Right, and I can talk to the whole, the whole, I can talk to 4965.
You can speak to the resolution.
Right, okay. I have spent time at more than one previous board meeting explaining problems with these protocols, and basically, nothing has changed. They are still plagued by...
First, Director Buell, before you go into that, you have to have a motion for some kind of a change, or before you move into that?
Oh, well, I'll wait for the res, I thought we could speak to the resolution now. That's what I was speaking to, the resolution, isn't the resolution before us?
We haven't, no, I haven't done...
How do we make a motion to something that wasn't before us?
I'll, I'll do that for you.
Okay.
Right here, I thought that's what, I thought you had another amendment.
No.
Okay. All right, so, let's go ahead and vote on Resolution 4965.
That's what I'm talking to, 4965, this is.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Discussion about that, that's okay.
Let's have board discussion on 4965.
It's very confusing, it is very confusing.
It's a little difficult.
I appreciate, yeah, okay. I'll start over. I have spent time at more than one previous board meeting explaining problems with these protocols, and basically, nothing has changed. They are still plagued by what my mother used to call silliness. For over a year, I have tried to help the board majority understand we are not a private club, but an elected government body with important responsibilities. I have explained we need to follow federal law, state law, including open meetings laws, and our own policies. I have explained past practice and how it works, and how resolutions are binding, but must follow the law and our own policy, but obviously, to no avail. Since I have been over much of this protocol territory before with no success, and since protocols are not binding anyway, I won't spend a lot of time reviewing. But as a prime example, I will focus on just one sentence, and using that one sentence, point out why no board member should vote for this resolution. Under the third section headed Communication, the protocols state board members should refrain from personally criticizing another board member or district staff in public. Let's talk about the board member part. Maybe some of my fellow colleagues have heard of something called the United States Constitution. A very important part of the Constitution is the First Amendment, which outlines the major rights of each citizen in the United States. I've brought copies for each of you. Joe, pass out now.
The Constitution?
First Amendment.
A very important part of the Constitution is the First Amendment. I have brought copies for each of you, and I made a couple copies for anyone in the audience who might like one later. They're kind of cool, I put a little U.S. flag on them in case someone didn't know what the U.S. flag looked like. And somebody just commented that this is not Congress, it starts out Congress, but we are under the same laws, because it's federal law, and so we're under those laws, see, to not, to not breach freedom of speech, same typical thing. The First Amendment outlines the five most basic rights of American citizens. The Supreme Court has said the rights are in order. First is religious freedom. Second is freedom of speech, the one we have botched. Third is freedom of the press. Fourth is freedom to peaceably assemble, and fifth is another we should be particularly in tune to, the right to petition the government for redress of grievances. It would seem to be clear that telling a board member to not criticize another board member in public certainly goes against freedom of speech. The most sacred right of freedom of speech is religious speech, but political speech is a closed second. So, here come the board elections, and we are telling each board member to not criticize another member in public. This may be the most absurd assertion we have made since I have been on the board, and that is saying something. Frankly, I would think the board majority would all be a little embarrassed over this. After all, we are the people in the community directly responsible for making sure our children receive an education in citizenship, which not only teaches American government, but their rights under the law. But even more so, we are the district which has the nation's most outstanding high school constitutional scholars, any of which could tell you in a minute, in fact, we have one up here, could tell you in a minute that restricting protected speech is the act of a totalitarian government body. I would think Ms. Knowles, who works at a university, would know better, and I would think Mr. Morton, who runs a school filled with children whose ancestors had their rights stripped from them for centuries, might be a little cognizant of protecting basic rights. But I guess not, so vote away, but as for me, I am voting no. Thank you.
Other comments?
Director Atkins?
Sure, just real quick, so I just appreciate, I mean, that we've worked on this document a number of times over several retreats, and so we're adopting it formally. I also appreciate that the same section under Communication that Director Buell was just commenting to, the very next item D is board members retain the right to express individual opinions, and when doing so, will clearly state that the opinion is his or hers and not that of the board. So, I appreciate that, that clause as well. But, one thing that for folks who weren't listening in to our last discussion of this in our most recent retreat, was that we adopted this knowing that we have to also work this year on getting our policies updated, and that hopefully, this document can be a lot more streamlined in the future, because a lot of it sort of duplicates, and so, anyway, I just wanted to remind, just let folks know about that. I appreciate, and just, this may be, we also had, related to the, I guess I'll bring it up when we get to the 4966, because just to be in parallel with the changes around having the auditor, and just that that work plan is a living document, and that got added as well, but we don't necessarily have to vote on it because it is a working, living document, so...
We have all the requirements for the auditor already, I promise.
Right, so, and then...
It's, again, it's that duplication that we're trying to get rid of.
Right.
And next time, we won't have to have it in there, so...
Right. And also, just to point out that we have, I'm looking forward to the, the work with the committees that's getting underway, so we have the Audit Committee and the Chota Committee and the brand-new Climate Committee, as well as the district work groups that we're all going to participate on, so that's another piece of it as well. So, anyway, we're glad, thanks, I just want to say thanks again for all the work that went into shaping these, as well as, most importantly, the work plan, which is really exciting to have that, and this will be up on the website as well, so...
Director Regan?
So, most times when we are looking at resolutions, or oftentimes when we're looking at resolutions, they're actually kind of a revision to a current policy. Is that the case with this one? I mean...
I'm not quite understanding your...
So, a lot of times when we pass a resolution, it is a revision. You'll see on the bottom of the resolution when it was first adopted by the board in 1972, and then it was revised in 84, and then it revised again in 97, and then it was revised again. So, I guess my question is, has the board adopted board member expectation and operating protocols in the past?
Yes.
So, why is that not listed?
I'm going to amend the question.
So, I think the date stamp that you're talking about is normally at the bottom of the policies that are adopted by the board. Normally, for the resolutions, we don't acknowledge the number of times that they've been adopted, but this board has, I think, for the last three years, adopted these operating protocols, and we've had them up on the website and passed resolutions for them.
Okay, that's helpful. So, one of my, I mean, in general, I think having board member expectations and operating protocols makes sense. At the same time, one of my concerns is, I feel like a lot of times, we, when, when staff or board leadership wants to shut down discussions, this is what you end up doing, you go over these over and over and over and over again. And I'm not saying that about this board, I'm saying it about another board that I served on, where it was important for board members to be speaking up and out, and what the staff and, and the board leadership did was just constantly go back to, you know, like, every month, relooking at our protocols, and it was unbelievably frustrating and a complete and utter waste of time. So, I feel like we've already spent way too much time on this. I'm, I'm fine moving forward with it, I guess. I don't look at this as binding, particularly, and I guess if I'm...
As what?
As binding.
Binding.
If somebody tells me it's binding, I'll vote no. But I'm assuming this is more about expectations on how we treat each other and staff. So, Amanda, could you talk to us about whether this is just expectations, or whether this is presumably binding in some way, because I will change my vote depending on your answer? I don't know how, I don't know how it could be, I don't know how it could be binding. It says we're all individually elected, but...
Well, the title alone says board member expectations and protocols.
And so, it's just...
Just expectations that we have for each other.
It's our working agreements, and it's just, there's nothing binding about it, so that, to me, is important, because there are a couple pieces in there, in here, that I would probably take some exception to a little bit, although I certainly appreciate the need for us to have some respectful tools of engagement as we work together, so, okay.
Director Bilal?
I just want to make a comment regarding Director Buell's comments. Director Buell, and you and I can talk about this maybe more in a more appropriate setting than at the dais, but I just want to acknowledge that I felt co-opting another group's oppression for, for personal gain, or to make someone's point, especially someone from the dominant culture, is quite inappropriate. And again, I'm happy to talk to you later about that, but I just wanted to put it on record.
Other comments?
Yeah, just, I mean, I like how Bobby's just thinking, this, you know, we spent too much time on this, and it's basically, you know, act as, as an adult and respectful elected official, so that's kind of how I view the thing. The, but I do agree on the, on the, the criticism, political speech aspect of it, I find a little not correct. So, I mean, I agree with Steve on that particular point. And also, there's some, there's one thing in there that says, "You shall vote on every single measure," and I don't want to be told that, because, like, on this particular issue, I may abstain.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to... Okay, then we'll vote on Resolution 4965. Ms. Houston, would you do a roll call vote, please? Director Buell?
I'm voting no. I'm voting for the Constitution and against, and against the resolution.
Director Bilal?
Yes.
Director Regan?
Yes.
Director Atkins?
Yes.
Director Morton?
Yes.
Director Kurler?
Abstain.
Chair Knowles?
Yes.
And student representative?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, now to our regular business agenda. Any other comments on the business agenda?
So, maybe it's, I don't know if it's a point of order, I mean, so, the areas of focus around, were planned for 2014-15. Staff did, in light of Bobby bringing forward that change in addition to the operating protocols, they did put in, I mean, I just want to back up and clarify that this is a living document, and intended to be that, so we're, we're voting to approve it tonight, not because nothing on this will ever change. This includes, you know, when things are coming to us, but it's our commitment and our public, you know, commitment to this, but it doesn't mean that it's, every piece of this is out to a set stone. But acknowledging that Bobby had brought forward that addition to clarify that, yes, we are doing the work with performance auditor, staff did put in that, so I didn't know if we needed to go through the same process.
It's already in there, isn't it?
It wasn't before, but it is now. So, it's now in the revised version on the back. Wait a minute, hold on a second. Am I looking at the wrong one?
It's a, it's a working document, so I'm not sure that we were specifically voting it out, right?
I know, I'm just saying you've...
It's going to keep changing.
It's now, sorry, the revised one.
But it's going to keep changing, so...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, isn't it?
That's fine. We have, we have an amended version that added a cell that said, "Establish Audit Plan November, Complete Audit Gin." That's all.
Perfect.
Which is going to be added as soon as the Audit Committee met and decided to do the review, so, I'm just saying.
And I just wanted to call out one thing that I'm very pleased about in, in our plan here, which is that the intergovernmental agreement here with the Multnomah Education Service District includes funding for our current outdoor schools, so I'm really pleased that we are, have been able to continue it at some level. Certainly hope at some level, at some time, very soon, we'll be able to expand it back to the full week, but, anyway, it's exciting that it's in there for the rest of us today.
Any other comments? Okay, in that case, let's vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Any extensions? This agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student representative Jeswall voting yes. Director Buell, or Director Bilal, sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. I, I'd like to make a motion, there's a resolution that's been at your tables that I've talked a little individually with, to you, but in order to consider this resolution not having added in our package per our protocols and processes, we would need to have a two-thirds majority of the board agree to suspend our rules, so I'd like to make a motion to suspend our ordinary rules to consider the next resolution.
Is there a second to the motion?
No, second that.
Discussion?
Can I have a chance to read it? I haven't seen this before.
Uh, this is just on whether we're going to consider it. So, I'll wait for a few minutes. Go ahead and, all those in favor of suspending the rules in order to consider this resolution recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, student representative Jeswall?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay, so now we can go ahead and consider the resolution.
I'd like to make a resolution, or motion to consider the resolution recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay.
Chair Knowles, I'll need a resolution number, I don't know what our last one.
Yeah, four nine six seven. Yep, four nine six seven.
Four nine six seven. Do you want me to read it?
So a second?
You want me to read it prior to a second, or do you want me to?
I think everybody here has it, so.
Okay.
And everybody's read it, is that correct? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Director Buell?
Yeah, I don't have any, I think that's probably a good idea, but I do have a, I do have a couple of comments. One is, if we're going to encourage district staff to include the teaching of the history, culture, and governments of the indigenous peoples of our state, first of all, I think the state probably should be of our nation, or actually, should be maybe of our North America, and South America, and Central America, we should be teaching that, but not just our state. But we should actually be doing this, not just having a day, we should actually have curriculum that's built around where this fits into our social studies curriculum, and in our social studies curriculum, in a lot of places, it's practically non-existent. I was talking to a teacher the other day, he says, "You understand, Steve, that nobody is teaching any social studies in our school, in K through five." So we're not, this is nice, but I would much rather see added on a section that said, and I'd love to come back and say, because relevant his, history should be taught throughout our school system, and it, and it should include indigenous peoples, it should include Black history, it should include Latino history. We should have that as a major area of focus in what we're doing in our schools. Now, I was back when I co-authored the desegregation plan, way back, way back, that was one of the major things we did, was added in Black history, and we told the superintendent to get that going, we want it going. I'm, I, I think we need to look at our whole social studies framework within these different various sections of history that obviously should be in there and throughout the whole thing, they're not, you don't pick them out and just put them here, you put them into the whole historical context. So I would love to see the people who are voting for this, along with me, who have four votes kind of on the board, come back with a plan that says, okay, let's get this social studies straightened out, let's get this relevant history and, and even some relevant cultural things going in our schools where we don't have them, so they're come from the center, not left up to the occasional teacher who does that. So I'm planning to vote for this, but I'd love to see actual, some, something that would have really affected kids in the long run.
Thank you, other comments? Sure, Director Morton?
I'm obviously excited to, to see something like this, I think there's, there's a lot more to it, I can, you know, I understand from your frame, Director Buell, putting it within a historical context, I think the larger implications actually fit within our current modern context of how we engage and serve our native students within our Portland Public School buildings. I think this is a, a really positive gesture that allows us to create, allows us the environment in which we can create insiders into our, into our schools, and I think if we were to look and, or if we were to talk to parents and families and caregivers of Native kids within our schools right now, they very much feel like outsiders, and I think there are some exceptions to that rule, but from my experience, that's the rule. There are a couple of organizations that are working on exactly what Director Buell had recommended, one is the American Indian Alaska Native Oregon Education State Planning Advisory Panel, which is working with the Oregon Department of Education on developing curriculum appropriate for the teaching of indigenous issues across the state's curriculum. The other is the Oregon Indian Education Association, which is made up of educators and administrators from around the state that is working on something very similar to this, so we're, we are not alone in the need to identify and create a curriculum that's relevant, and also reflects an appropriate history, I think that goes without saying, but also, even more importantly, reflects, reflects a current, modern position of Native people in our community, and I think this is, this is one of those first opportunities. And the fact that it is referred to as indigenous is one that, by its word, reflects both indigenous people of North America, and also indigenous people of Central and South America, and indigenous people from around the world, so I think it's one that, that definitely shows the indigenous value of inclusivity, and I'm going to support it.
Other comments?
Yeah, I would just say, like, I echo what Matt's been saying, I think it's an important first step and something that should be a long-term thing, but this come, this is coming up, this would be next Monday, like, just like that motion would be really nice for students who are from that category to like, have something they see themselves like in the school, but then from that, hopefully, that would inspire more people to like, bring it more into the school, and for teachers to get educated, and we should be there helping them, and like, giving them the tools they need.
Thank you. Others? Director Buell?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on what Matt said, I'm just saying, if you're going to do it, let's do it. Let's get at it, let's get this, let's get this stuff done, and I know it's not going to come from me, because they're not going to allow me to do it, but it can come from people on this board, and I'm one hundred percent willing to support it, and I think we need to go for it and quit fooling around with it.
Other comments?
Thank you.
Director Bilal?
Well, I was, since the members of the public probably don't have a copy, I was hoping to read through it. But before I do that, I'm, I'm also hoping that this is a small step, yes, within our district, but I'm also hoping to encourage our city, state, and county leaders to also make the movement to recognize, recognize indigenous folks and their contributions. So with that, the recitals for Resolution four nine six seven, Resolution Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, is, one, the Board of Education, Board, recognizes that indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial. Two, the Board recognized the fact that Portland was built upon the homelands and villages of the indigenous peoples of this region, without whom the city would not have been possible. Three, the Board values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution that has substantially shaped the character of the city of Portland. Four, the Board has a responsibility to oppose the systematic racism toward indigenous peoples in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. Five, the Board seeks to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination and institutionalized racism, and to promote awareness, understanding, and good relations among indigenous peoples and all other segments of our district. Recital six, the Board promotes the closing of the equity gap for indigenous peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous peoples, ensure greater access and opportunity, and honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, and contributions. Resolutions. One, the Board strongly encourages district staff to include the teaching of the history, culture, and governments of the indigenous peoples of our state. Two, the Board recognizes the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And three, the Board commits to continuous support of the well-being and growth of every Portland Public School student, especially our American Indian and indigenous students.
Thank you, and that'll be up on our website as well. So, any other comments? No. Okay, so then, in that case, let's go ahead and vote on Resolution four nine six seven, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven, the, excuse me, the resolution passes seven to zero, with student representative voting yes.
Director Knowles?
Director Bilal?
I just wanted to thank my colleagues for considering this on such short notice, I know that it goes outside the norm, and I just want to say I really appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Anything else, board members? Next meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, October four.